No changes. Hearing no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. We are now at the recognitions part of our meeting.
We have three recognitions we're going to do tonight. And Joe Benikoff, if I could call you up and so you could be up here while I kind of explain, and then I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit more in depth about the award. But we're honoring one of our students today. I should say that Prudential Company is honoring one of our students today for the Spirit, the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards for Michigan. And one of our freshmen at TC Central High School was a distinguished finalist for this award. And I'm gonna let Mr. Benikoff, who's a representative for Prudential, talk about the spirit of the community award and a little bit about, well, and I should mention, Taylor Wexstein is our honoree, and talk a little bit about her project if you would like to, and then we'll get Taylor up there.
Sure, yeah, they got me a little spiel here for me.
Awesome.
It is certainly a great privilege that I can represent my company and be here tonight and present this for all of you tonight, as we mentioned, an outstanding young lady, Taylor Wexstein. My company, Prudential Financial, in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, sponsors a national awards program to honor young Americans who care about their world and find ways to make a difference, which Taylor has done. We do this because we believe if we're going to meet many challenges of today, we're all going to have to get more involved in making our communities and our planet a better place to live. And when we all agree that our greatest hope in doing that is our youth, our young individuals. All over the United States, middle level and high school students are volunteering to improve their own communities and the communities of others. We hope that by identifying and honoring these young volunteers and holding them up as role models, others will be inspired to volunteer too. Since 1995, Prudential has recognized over 100,000 individuals like Taylor that have showed a special interest in their community and helping their community. Thousands of young people across the country were considered for Prudential Spirit of Community Awards this year, and from all of these, a select few in each state and a district of Columbia have been selected for special recognition. So out of only a couple hundred people, Taylor is being recognized in this country. Here in Michigan, I'm delighted to report that one of our own distinguished finalists in this year's program is your own, Taylor Wexstein. Taylor, can you please come forward? Let me explain the program a little bit. This is Taylor, everybody.[216.06][216.06](APPLAUSE). So as we mentioned, Taylor has been single out from all of the middle level and high school students in Michigan for outstanding service to our community. Taylor founded Giving One Family at a Time, or GIFT, the acronym, a charitable organization that helps one family at a time to get back on their feet financially. And if you have the opportunity to get to know Taylor a little bit and what she does in this program, she actually helps feed and clothe individuals and even help them get further education and even get back in the workplace. I mean, amazing. She singles out one particular family and puts all of her attention on that one family at a time. It's an amazing program that we could all definitely learn from. Taylor, your commitment and compassion represent the highest ideals of service to one's community. To honor your accomplishments, I'd like to present you with the engraved Prudential Spirit of Community Bronze Medalion, signifying your outstanding community service. On behalf of Prudential and everyone here, I want to congratulate you.[293.83][293.83](APPLAUSE).
Don't run away so fast. We're gonna need a picture.
Oh, yeah.
On behalf of the board, we commend you and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe, can you come back up and we'll get a picture with you and with our board president? And Jay Lerner is going to say something, I believe. Well, Jay, go ahead.
Taylor's a ninth grade student at Central High School and, you know, obviously well deserving of the award for everything that she's accomplished this year. And, you know, obviously, we're gonna see these things continue from years to come.
Yeah, a little bit about what she, she got the award, but you need to know, she started this when she was 11, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, not a lot of 11-year-olds. I was dreaming of beating Steve Prefontaine, I think, when I was 11 years old. I wasn't thinking about anybody else. So to think of doing this when she's 11 years old and then stick to it all the way, you know, she's a freshman in high school, I think is really, says a lot about your character and I think the way you were raised, too. So moms and dads get support for that. And she's, I think $12,000 is what you've raised?
With our new fund raise, we're almost at 25, actually.
Oh, look at that, 25,000. And gotten another 100 of your classmates at one point or another involved in it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty, I just think that's pretty amazing. So I think we'll see wonderful things from you in the future, too.
Thank you.
So if you guys can come over here, Jay, you too, we'll get a picture with Mrs. McCollum take a picture. So kinda do a little half circle step up.
Thank you.
One more round of applause. Our second recognition, I'm gonna ask Rod Lowe to come up here. We're going to do our Green Schools, Traverse City Central High School, and we try to recognize the schools that are new to the Green Schools list each year. And so Rod, I'm gonna turn it over to you if you could say a little bit about the program and how Central got there.
I think they got the Emerald Award, which is the second highest.
Right. It's an advanced level.
Yeah.
Yeah. Michigan Green Schools is a nonprofit organization set up primarily to encourage and recognize schools that teach environmental stewardship. They act in ways to lessen their impact on the environment and also to improve the watershed and, you know, the ecology of the state of Michigan. So there's identified criteria, which Steve was alluding to, there's a points process, and there's three levels. The green is the basic level, green school. Emerald is like an advanced level, and then there's evergreen, which is the highest attainable at this point. This year, Central High School obtained green school status for their first time, and they're already at the Emerald level. So that's a real great thing for a first-year recognition. Some of the activities noted in their application include recycling, and that's really one word for multiple activities that are going on at the school regarding recycling. They established a kitchen garden that's in relation to their cooking or food program there at the school, and also composting the waste from that same cooking program. Teaching units on alternative energy and environmental studies, which are related to the goals of green schools. They're involved in a project to improve vehicle fuel efficiency. How cool is that? And activities promote the health of the Great Lakes watershed, as I said. And those are just examples. So Central High already received recognition and a green schools flag at an awards or recognition ceremony at the Boardman River Nature Center late last month, I think it was last month.
Correct.
Yep. So, but we want to recognize and congratulate them on their success here, this year with the green schools recognition.
Great. Jay?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good enough.[570.12][570.12](APPLAUSE).
Could I?
You can do whatever you'd like.
Can I just mention the other schools?
Sure. I was going to, if you were going to.
We did, we had multiple other schools that get recognition. Eastern Elementary, it's their third year being a green school, and they're at their evergreen level. Montessori Schools, Emerald, and it's their third year as well. Silver Lake, second year, they're also Emerald. Willow Hill, third year, evergreen, so the highest level. West Middle School, fourth year, that's great, evergreen level, and West Senior High is their third year, and they are also at evergreen. And I also wanted to mention, East Middle School has been a past recipient of green school recognition for TCAPS, but those are the ones for this year. Thanks, Ben, thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
Our last recognition is with the Coast Guard. And I'm gonna ask Commander Langham and Lieutenant Commander Grabowski to come up. And Commander Bazela couldn't be here tonight, he had to be at the Athena Awards. And, you know, I just want to say that I think that our school district is extremely lucky to have the relationship with the Coast Guard that we have. I'm gonna talk about tangible ways that our kids benefit from the relationship with the Coast Guard. I mean, it goes beyond the fact that the families engage with us and send their kids to school, it's the countless hours of volunteerism that we get from the Coast Guard. It's the, it's the extra fun things like the helicopter landing at Central High School so that the assignment tech kids can come out and check out stuff. I was there for that, it was way cool.
I was flying that.
It was, and it's so cool that even a guy who's bald, my hair was growing back. And so I, you know, the commitment to the community and then the commitment to our kids is just, just wonderful. It's one of the, one of the great things I love about being part of this district.
Absolutely.
And I can't say enough about you. I know you're heading on and taking your command in Houston, we were just talking about. I spent nine months and 11 days once in Houston. And your commitment to this community and the character that you've shown, you've been here, has just been a wonderful bonus, not just our school district, but I think the whole community here. There's oftentimes when some people leave, there's this wake that's left behind them. And I think the wake that you have left has been very, very positive, and I think you've touched a lot of people in a deep way. So thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
And thank you for being such a great community member.
Thanks.
And I'm just gonna say very quickly about Commander Bazela, I wish he could be here tonight.
As was saying.
I would be, I'd be saying the same things. It's just, you know, we only get these commanders for a couple of years, and he jumped right in and embedded himself in the community.
Absolutely.
He began to strategically look at how he could improve our community through the resources that the Coast Guard had, and in the process has become a good friend, and I will miss him, too. So I'll catch him before he totally leaves town.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks a lot, Scott.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely.
And the board.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is more to recognize you. Absolutely.
Yeah, but let's get a picture of you guys with that first before Kelly goes to sit down.
All right.
I'd like to have it for my scrapbook. If you guys can put me a little farther.
Awesome.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening. It's another great day to be in Coast Guard City, Traverse City. My boss always says that, and since I'm filling in, filling in for him tonight, I wanted to express his traditional greeting. On behalf of Commander Joseph Bazela and the 140 families of Air Station Traverse City, I'd like to take a moment and thank you for giving us a brief, brief spot tonight to address the TCAPS school board and the leadership team. I represent my boss, Commander Joseph Bazela, who couldn't be here tonight because he is at the, participating in the Athena Awards banquet. It's honestly a bit bittersweet that we're here tonight, because as many of you know, the Coast Guard families come and go on a, on a two, three, or four-year cycle. And as Commander Bazela and I reached the last couple of weeks of our tenure here in Traverse City, it was very important for us to express our appreciation and support that TCAPS has provided the Coast Guard families in town. Two of Commander Bazela's guiding principles for his tenure here have been the partnership and community. And what a perfect confluence of those two principles than in our public school system. That's why it was so important for Commander Bazela to be here and to build such a strong relationship for TCAPS and address this forum, and also why he's so unhappy that he couldn't be here tonight. So I'm gonna do my best to fill in for him in his absence. As many of you know, in 2010, Traverse City was designated as our nation's 10th Coast Guard city. This congressional designation was important because it officially codified the longstanding relationship between Traverse City and the US Coast Guard. But most importantly, it codified the mutual respect and support that Traverse City and the Coast Guard have given each other throughout the years. It's this relationship that has, that has made both Commander Bazela, since my time here in Traverse City, and I can honestly say this, the best in our whole Coast Guard careers. And for that, I thank all of you on both sides of me. In the military, there's one constant, and that constant is change. Every year, there's approximately 30 members and their families that leave and arrive in Traverse City. And I can tell you that from firsthand experience, that transitioning students from schools is probably the single greatest stressor to military families. Commander Bazela has three kids in school that have gone to central grade, eastern elementary, and central high. I myself have two daughters who have been in central grade, eastern, eastern middle and central high as well. And I can say with from the bottom of my heart that we could not be happier with the experiences our families have had on the east side of school, at central high, east middle, and, and central grade. So go Trojans.[921.73][921.73](LAUGHTER). Speaking from personal experience, this is the fourth state that my children have been to in their young academic careers. So often you hear about the negatives in our schools, in our schools and in our communities, but Commander Bazela and I thought it was imperative tonight for those that are, that are in attendance to realize what a great program, what a great resource, and truly what a blessing it is to have a school system like TCAPS available. There have been variances in academics and schedules and programs as we've moved about the country, but I can tell you without any reservation that TCAPS is doing it right. Commander Bazela and I would like to specifically recognize Superintendent Cousins, Dr. Mar, who's I think at the same event that Commander Bazela is at, the school board, the school principals, counselors, and teachers for your vision, leadership, and guidance building a top-tier school system. From my perspective, TCAPS has eased the transition for new families by offering an opportunity to meet with Coast Guard families prior to the school year even starting, offering up to counselors and administrative staff to help with transitioning transcripts, school records, et cetera. TCAPS has even hired some coasties, retired, and some spouses to work in the school system as well. So for that, thank you very much. Commander Bazela was so moved by the leadership of Superintendent Cousins and the, and the relationship with TCAPS that he nominated Mr. Cousins to attend the Joint Civilian Orientation Course, or JCOC. And for those that, you may not know what that is, it's a program sponsored by the Department of Defense, designed to have civic leaders learn more about what the military means. There was, Commander Bazela nominated Superintendent Cousins. He was one of over 350 applications from throughout the nation, and he was selected to be one of 81 participants in last year's JCOC. Superintendent Cousins came and spoke at the base about his experiences, and I can tell you from a first, firsthand, that I think it made a tremendous, tremendous impact in his life, and I can tell you that he represented TCAPS in Traverse City admirably while at the JCOC. Another program that Commander Bazela and I were, you know, very much involved in was shortly after assuming command, was the reestablishment of our MOU for the Partnership and Education Program with TCAPS. We are very, very proud of that program. To date, there's been about 150 volunteers from the base that have volunteered throughout the TCAP system, but we mainly focus on the Traverse Heights Elementary School. We go over on a weekly basis, and we read, we mentor, we play with the kids, and have developed a really unique bond there. I'm, I'm one of those mentors. I've, for the last two years, I've had the distinct privilege of teaching a junior achievement class to a bunch of awesome first graders and Mrs. Buds and Ms. Pemish's class, and we're giving them a tour of the base on Thursday. So they're certainly welcome to join us if you want. But it's programs like these, and it's that kind of environment that is, that has been created by, by you and by everyone in this room, that it makes TCAP such a special place for our kids to go to school. There was a pretty good professional football coach that coached a team on the other side of the lake that wears green and gold. Go Pack. One of his sayings was, "We will pursue perfection, knowing that, that none of us are perfect, and we will not reach perfection, but in our pursuit, we will catch excellence." Commander Bazela is departing to go to the National War College in Washington DC, and I'm departing to Houston, but I would like to state in this forum that I offer the full support of the men and women and families of Air Station Traverse City to help you in your pursuit of perfection in the future. So Superintendent Cousins, school board, and families of TCAPS, thank you very much for your support of the Coast Guard.[1131.12][1131.12](APPLAUSE).
Thanks, XO. Again, just a few more minutes, more of the same. He's a much better speaker than I am publicly, so bear with me as I get through this. Thank you. I felt compelled to do this and address the board because we have a personal experience with our kids and with TCAPS, but sincerely, thank you all for allowing me a couple of minutes to address you today. My name is Lieutenant Commander Mark Grabowski, and I've had the privilege of serving the extraordinary community of the Coast Guard City, Traverse City, and the fine people throughout the Great Lakes for the last four years. Unfortunately, and like most other coasties, it's my family and I's time to transfer this summer to Washington DC. We are going to miss this place, and we will certainly miss the great relationship that has been established between TCAPS and the Coast Guard Air Station. It's truly amazing, and unlike any other that I've encountered in 22 years of service, our next adventure will be our ninth move and place us in our fourth school district. As a proud member of the air station, I want to personally thank this board, the TCAPS leadership and administration members, and the many teachers throughout TCAPS for their genuine support and concern for all of our active-duty Coast Guard members and their families who are entrenched throughout the TCAPS system. Our missions and operations, daily schedules, deployments, and transfer orders offer unique challenges and issues to many of our families' lifestyles, particularly in the area of school systems. In one man's humble opinion, I just wanted to take this opportunity to tell you that you're doing it right. From the time we relocated to Traverse City four years ago, the air station and its members have experienced nothing short of outstanding support from all TCAPS personnel, as many of our members try to find the right school, settle their kids, meet new friends, understand curriculum they have had in other locations, and try to accommodate the new curriculum that they will experience in their new location. If there was a model we could juxtapose as a standard for a relationship between any school system and a Coast Guard station, this would be it. On behalf of all members of the air station, we truly appreciate the efforts put forth by the board, TCAPS leadership, and the command of Air Station Traverse City for having such a positive relationship in place. Many of you can probably relate to this, as many of us in this room are parents. As a parent, sometimes it's really hard to gauge how you're doing with the challenges related to raising a family and what your kids are really like outside of your house. One of the most gratifying things my wife and I can hear about our kids is the affirmation and positive comments from a third party regarding our kids and that we're doing it right. And that's one of the main reasons I'm here, to be that third party to this board and express how highly we think of the TCAP system and the people that make it go. My lovely wife Tammy and I have four kids enrolled in TCAPS schools, covering preschool, elementary, middle, and high school. Big family. Sean started at West Middle in seventh grade, and is, he's currently finishing his sophomore year at West High. Cam started at West Woods in fourth grade, and he's currently finishing seventh at West Middle. Audrey started at West Woods. Kindergarten is currently finishing third, and Alyssa, who is four, and every bit of it, is enrolled in preschool at West Woods. Tammy and I would like to express how remarkable our experience has been with TCAPS. Each of our kids, and we as parents, have experienced countless, countless professional educators who show genuine concern for the education and welfare of our kids. We thank you for that and have no doubt that trend will continue in the future. Our experience is obviously focused on the schools mentioned, but I'm sure those characteristics are ingrained in every school and employee throughout TCAPS. Our Coast Guard members are dispersed amongst the many schools throughout the county, and I'm confident they would echo the same. We've had the pleasure of getting to know so many people, some on a professional level, some on a personal level, and some on both levels. In fact, I see some of the folks here today throughout. We will forever cherish those relationships. There are terrific people littered throughout TCAPS system who are dedicated and passionate to their profession, and having a passion for whatever you do leads to success, whether it's being a good husband, raising your kids, flying helicopters, or educating our youth. Thanks to the many dedicated individuals in TCAPS who have a true passion for what they do. With two active boys, the sports programs were also near and dear to us. The coach, coaching staffs have been exceptional in providing quality mentorship for our youth and providing a tremendous foundation for becoming a solid human being in life. Sorry, XO. And any Trojan fans, we've been proud Titans for the last four years.[1434.12][1434.12](LAUGHTER).[1435.12][1435.12](APPLAUSE). And that's not necessarily for the successes on the field or the court, but for the way the kids represent their team, their schools, and their communities. The staffs are providing framework to countless kids for life success. Thanks to Coach Graham and Coach Wora at West High, although our personal experience is through the West Side Stream, I'm confident the same holds true throughout the school district. Like I said, I certainly felt compelled to do this prior to our family's departure and wish you all nothing but the best as you make your way forward. Thanks so much for a great school system and allowing me to express that to you today. Kind of emotional, it is, it's with four kids in the school system, we love this place and we're gonna miss it. I can only hope we find a similar experience in our next adventure east. I look forward to seeing you at the air station's change of command on June 7th. Please mark your calendars. And of course, all TCAP staff and personnel are invited to attend. Thanks for having us.[1498.62][1498.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you both very much. The board would like to welcome our audience, both those in person here tonight, as well as those who are watching at home, either live or subsequently via the internet. The board provides a few opportunities for public comment. This first opportunity, we ask that it be related to agenda items only. Subsequently, when we have discussion motion items, there will be opportunity for comment on each discussion motion item. And then at the end of our meeting, we have a public comment opportunity that is open to any subject relevant to TCAPS, not only agenda items. So at this point, I would invite anyone from the audience who would like to make public comment on an agenda item to step forward and give your name and address to our recording secretary, Ms. Tibbetts. We do ask that you limit your public comment to three minutes. Again, there are other opportunities for comment. We'll proceed to our discussion, board discussion portion of our agenda. Just on a couple of miscellaneous items before I open it up to other board members. We have a coffee conversation scheduled at Horizon Books on Thursday, May 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30. Do any board members want to volunteer to attend that session? Let's see.
I'd be happy to.
Great. Awesome. Mr. Cousins, will you be able to go?
Yes.
And Superintendent Cousins, Mr. Falconer, Ms. Crandall will be in attendance. Again, that's in the basement of Horizon Books from 6:00 to 7:30 on May 30th. We have an additional committee meeting, the board curriculum committee meeting, or board curriculum committee has added a meeting for Thursday, June 6th, from 7:30 to 8:30 AM here at the Boardman Administration Building.
There were some items that came up in the last week that are not prepared for our meeting on Thursday morning at 7:30 AM, but have to be moved forward to finance before our next curriculum committee meeting in later June. So we're adding a one-hour additional meeting to cover some math curricular things that we have to get out of the way before late June.
Okay. So that is in addition to your meeting scheduled for Thursday. Excellent. Are there any other items that any board members would like to raise at this time of miscellaneous nature? Scott?
I'd like to invite the general public downtown at 9 o'clock on Saturday to what we're calling Dumpsters Unparade. There is a curricular program from two of the teachers at West Woods Elementary where they're coordinating themes that revolve around the downtown in the northern Michigan area, and they will be working with artist mentors downtown to paint and have reside eight dumpsters that will be in the alley between Union and Cass, behind Vitruva's and the City Opera House, and all these are the alley down in that neck of the woods. We're doing it in collaboration with American Waste and also the Downtown Traverse City Association, and we have four artist mentors, Glenn Wolf, Nancy Nash, Jean Larson, and Chase Hunt, who will be working with the students to develop their themes on the dumpsters and hopefully beautify downtown. But that's Saturday morning at 9 o'clock, weather permitting.[1785.26][1785.26](LAUGHTER). We're not bringing the dumpsters inside.
Any other items?
No, I just wanted to make a request of the audience members that we... No, I just wanted to make a request of the audience members that we, personally, I love having lots of people in the audience, and I think it's wonderful. We really do appreciate public comment, and that's why we've provided more opportunities. And for now, for all the discussion motion items, we are providing that opportunity. But I would ask that you not speak amongst yourselves during the meeting. It's very distracting, and I find it, well, really incredibly annoying. So if you have something to say, please come up and give public comment, but don't talk amongst yourselves. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we will proceed to superintendent's report. Mr. Cousins?
Yes, tonight, I've asked Jamie McCall, Executive Director of Special Ed and Early Childhood, to give us an update on special ed programming. We've been working on that, and there was enough progress that we felt an interim report was a good idea. So Ms. McCall?
And I've actually invited a few partners that are going to be co-presenting with me, so if you guys can come up. Carol Breilich here from the ISD, she's Department Associate Superintendent of Special Education. Behind her is Jill Melbert. Jill oversees the SXI and moderate cognitive impairment programs. Erin Ryan, you met earlier, who is an administrative intern and also a teacher for TCAPS. And Mimi Spalding, who oversees transition activities. Our plan tonight is this, we're going to talk a little bit about that full continuum that you've seen before, and we're going to talk to you about the piece of the continuum that we usually skip over, because we want you to understand all of the programs that are available to students that are within TCAPS residence. So the least restrictive environment position, this is a board policy that you have adapted. It's also federal law. And really what the law says is, a team of people gather around and they determine what is the least restrictive environment in order to meet the student's educational needs, whether it be programs or services. So we're not giving them more than what they need, but we're not giving them less than what they need. And that's all dependent on data, criteria, and a group's decision. Here is your full board policy on it, and it's right in line with federal law. Acronyms that are pretty familiar to you probably, FATE, Free Appropriate Public Education, and LRE, which we hear a lot about, least restrictive environment. Again, it means least restrictive environment in order to meet the educational needs of In Michigan, there are 13 categories that we've talked about before, oops, where students can qualify for special education services. So when a child is diagnosed or said to have some type of an impairment, if that impairment is within these categories and the child needs specialized instruction, that's when a child qualifies for special education within TCAPS and within the state of Michigan. Struggle a little bit with this one. Okay, and now Carol.
So after a student is determined eligible for special education, that is, meets one of the eligibility categories, and needs specialized instruction, the team collects data to determine needs in a variety of domains, those domains being up on the slide right now. A student may have needs in the academic area, meaning the student requires specialized instruction or remedial instruction. The student may have adaptive needs, and adaptive refers to daily living skills, acquiring those daily skills that we all use to adapt to our environment, dressing, feeding, getting along with others. Student may have behavioral needs, rising to the challenge of behavioral expectations in the classroom and in the community. Speech and language, either articulation, how a student says his or her words, or how a student uses language. The student may have social-emotional needs, how the student gets along with others, how the student adapts to the school setting, how the student behaves. Physical needs, a student may have physical disabilities, cerebral palsy, some other muscular or disorder such as that. And medical needs, things like closed head injuries, allergies, things that require specialized medical attention. Needs in all of these areas can range from very mild, so that the student just needs accommodations in the classroom, or they may be very severe, so that the student needs a much more restrictive programming.
Or nursing.
Or nursing.
You've seen this continuum before. This is the continuum that we really are quite proud of in TCAPS, and it says, "We're going to meet needs in all of these different ways, depending on the individual," remember that word, "the individual's needs." So here's your full continuum, and this will be the portion, the ones that are in color, that we're going to focus on a little bit more tonight. We're going to take about 15 more minutes of your time, and we're going to talk to you about different programs that are in each of those areas that we service students that are TCAP students. Okay. Categorical programs. These are programs where when you have children that are pulled together within a classroom, they are 100% of the population within that classroom is special education. In TCAPS, we only have two types. One is the Early Childhood Special Education Program. This year, we had 10 sections, they're half-day sections, so five classroom teachers serving 24 students, 12 and 12, throughout TCAPS. We have one mildly cognitively impaired section at the elementary level, that's for students who are kindergarten through 5th or 6th grade, we have some flexibility there. We have one at the middle school, for students who are 6th through 8th, we do have a 9th grader in that program as well, because we felt it met his needs better. And we have three mild cognitively impaired sections at the high school level. Oops. For next year, you'll see, this is the projected number based on what we are rolling up in students that we believe might be joining one of these programs. Continuing with 10 early childhood special ed sections, we will also be contracting and providing that service for Glen Lake next year, which we do on and off depending on if we have space available. We will have two sections at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, and two at the high school level. Okay? That's just because the population has moved to it, and we have to be responding to those needs. I'm always struggling with this.
Can I interrupt just one second?
You bet.
If we have 10 early childhood special ed education sections and only one at the elementary level, or next year two, can you explain why there's such a difference?
Great question, Mimi. In the early childhood special ed sections, the range of needs can be anything from speech and language with just extreme articulation if they're going into a special ed program, could be a variety of different impairments, but they may not need categorical programming once they go into kindergarten. They might be supported with resource programs, or they might also just have a tenor service like speech and language.
Jamie, try clicking the silver button. Did you right-click or left-click?
I don't know.
Oh, that didn't do work, huh? There you go.
Okay, here we go. All right. Erin?
One of our categorical programs at the high school level is a program for students with mild cognitive impairments. Typically, we service grades 9 through 12 at those high school levels. Our students receive most of their instruction in a special ed classroom. We typically have no more than 15 students with assistance, and the skill level for a student in our program typically falls within the range of mild cognitive impairments. When we decide that a student is right for our programming, we're looking very closely at data, at the severity of their needs, we're looking at the IEP process, and we work together as a team to determine what is least restrictive. And for the students who are in our programs, this is the least restrictive environment. I put some more granola out for you tonight, and obvious there is some over there for you as well. This is a perfect example of something that we do in our classroom. We've created the small classroom business, we shop for materials, we make the money transaction, you know, we compare prices, we take beta. So the skills that we teach are very functional, practical skills that we will use day in and day out throughout our lives. For some students, this type of programming does not meet their needs, and we will look at some of our TBA programs, which Jill's going to talk about next.
Hi. TBA ISD does operate six center-based programs. We serve the five-county region. These programs are for a lower incidence of disability that districts would have a tough time providing the specialized or age-appropriate classrooms that we do. We have, your question about early childhood programs, some students that are in the early childhood programs might come to one of our programs when they age out of that. We have, we serve about 42% of our center students come from TCAPS. One of the programs that we have is at New Campus School. That's for students with severe emotional or behavioral challenges, and they have worked and continue to work with all of these programs to make sure that we are meeting a least restrictive environment. There's a process for those students to be accepted into those programs, because we're very conscious of the fact that we do not want to remove a student from their local district without making sure that that is the appropriate spot for them. They have a continuum of services that they offer at New Campus, along with kind of a step-down program where they're supporting students as they return them to their local district. We have the Adult Work Center, that is for students that are 16 to 26. They serve a variety of students with eligibilities from cognitive impairment to severe multiple impairment or autism spectrum disorder. The Adult Work Center also for, don't quote me, but I think an umbrella program that kind of hatched from that is the Adult Community Experience, or the ACE program. It's been in existence for about seven years, and it really focuses on students with mild cognitive impairments, but really independence, adult living, transition, and employment are the crux of that program. And it's located downtown, and so you will often, if you are aware of who the students are, see them out on their own, accessing the community. Oak Park, a school familiar to you all, is now where we house a center classroom or center programs for students with autism spectrum disorder. There's a huge support system for students with autism, because most of the students are not located within that program. But that's where we have some of our center programs to offer students that have a higher intensity of need there.
And I'm going to interject just for a minute, Jill. One of the things that we also do with Deb Nelson, and Deb oversees Oak Park, is that we have three classrooms of general education students there. We have a preschool, a ready-for, and next year we'll have another preschool in the building, so that we can have experiences with typical peers for the modeling of behavior for some of our students there. Okay, go ahead.
Also, I think it was about six years ago, at Traverse Heights, TBA built an additional section onto there, and that's where my office is housed, but currently we have four classrooms located there for students with severe multiple impairments. And we also have a classroom at Interlock and Elementary. And these are, these are students that have not only, you know, a cognitive need, but also, Carol talked about, those students with physical needs. Our program concentrates on mobility, communication, self-help, and we also address early literacy and math skills, but it's all rolled into a very specialized setting. And going back to least restrictive, particularly in our younger-age classrooms, our goal as an IEP team is always, and that's why we meet at least annually, is to return children to the setting that is the least restrictive. And I'm happy to report that we are booting out a couple of our children back to their locals to do an ECP classroom, a quartade next year, and another local ECP room. So we're always trying to look and see when they're able to return to their home district. We also, TBA runs, kind of a segue from, Erin talked about the mild CI programs that you operate in TCAPS. We have programs for students with moderate cognitive impairments, and we are housed in various spots in Traverse City, a couple in East Middle School, two at Central Grade, and one at the high school. And there, we focus on a functional curriculum, along with literacy core content, but we're working on, working on skills in different settings and environments where students will be utilizing those. Homebound and Hospitalize isn't a program, but it's a service that we deliver to students that would be attending our center-based programs if they were healthy enough to attend school. And currently, 11 students are receiving services based on that.
We also offer homebound hospitalized service for any student who has special education needs. We follow IEP guidelines, and we provide it throughout the community. We provide special ed services for students while they're incarcerated, if they're incarcerated next door, because we are the local that they would be attending if they lived next door. The same with students who are, have left our system through discipline hearing, we have to provide special ed services for those students as well.
Jamie, before Mimi talks about transition planning, I would just like to emphasize one point. And although we talk about those categorical programs as programs for students with moderate cognitive impairment, or for students with autism spectrum disorders, placement in those programs is based on need, it is not based on category of eligibility. So for every one of the students who is placed, we would collect data and determine need and make sure that that restrictive program placement actually met the student need, regardless of category of eligibility. And that those programs for students with low-incidence handicaps, we feel are pretty efficiently provided by the ISD. I don't think any one district, even one as large as TCAPS, can provide services for those low-incidence handicaps. Often, there are too few students, or those students' needs are too great to be met by a local district, where we would buy specialized equipment, or we would hire specialized services. It might be nursing, it might be services for visual impairment, things of that nature. So that'd just be a last point I wanted to make about our programs.
Thanks, Carol. I'd just like to start by letting you know what transition is, and transition is part of the IDEA law. And any student with an IEP, whether they are a severely multiple impaired student or a student with a learning disability, and everything in between, transition planning should be part of their formal academic and functional learning from age 16 on up. We start talking about it well before that, because it's really about how is the student going to integrate into their world after they leave the school setting, at whatever time that happens. So transition is part of FATE, it is part of the student's right to education, and as a transition coordinator, I don't just work with educators. I bring local agencies together to work with the students as they are getting ready to exit the school system or graduate from the school system. Transition by nature is, and by law, is noted as a coordinated set of activities. Now, how vague is that? But it is so vague, because it is, it is unique to every student, the needs are different for every student, and the linkages that we create with the family supports and the students are different for every student. Let's see, I think we go on next.
I think I can try to go on next.
You can try to go on.
I'm really struggling here. Sorry, Tina.
Can you stop for a minute, so I can ask questions?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you for that.
In Michigan, is the right for free appropriate public education to age 26 for students who qualify for center-based programs, is that?
It's as determined by the IEP team.
Okay.
So it's not one disability or another. It's based on the need of the student and what that least restrictive environment is going to be for the student to pursue. going to be for the student to pursue.
Is, are there any other states that provide?
No, the state of Michigan is the only one that goes to age twenty-six.
Okay.
Most states go to twenty-one or twenty-two. Carol, you happy to jump in here?
That's correct. There are, I believe, four other states who start at birth. Michigan is birthed at twenty-six, but Michigan is the only state that goes through twenty-six.
Are there any legislative efforts right now to cut that back?
Not that I am aware of. No, there was discussion about whether or not the services for students twenty-two to twenty-six should be diverted from the education system to the community mental health system, but that I know of, there are no real efforts to make that happen.
Okay.
The other, you asked about a free and appropriate public education. Students are eligible for that as long as it meets their needs. Once they have graduated or accepted a diploma from high school, they are considered exited from special education, so they no longer be eligible. If they only receive a certificate of completion, they would continue to be eligible if they had needs that could be met by the education system.
Okay, thank you.
So when I talk about a coordinated set of activities, we're looking at a screen here that lists quite a few different agencies and service organizations and educational partners. We work daily with students to outline what their vision is or what they're going to do when they leave the school setting. We help them over the years to define what that vision is to the best of their ability and work with the family supports to help them have input on, you know, what their idea of end goal is for their, for their young person. So you can see here, we work, TBA works with TCAPs very, you know, very actively. We see each other all the time. A couple of our larger state partners would be Michigan Rehab Services, Bureau of Services for Blind Persons, who just changed their name to the SVP. They had been Michigan Services for the Blind for a long time. We work with the college. We work with well over two-hundred-and-fifty employers. That was just those I can verify in the last several years. So we work with the community mental health systems and of course, in the Grand Traverse area, that is the Great Lakes Community Mental Health that would serve Grand Traverse and Leland. And DHS, Goodwill, Grand Traverse Industry, Social Security Administration, drawing in all those community supports that are going to be vital to the student as they enter their adult life. So we help them not only to recognize what services and supports they need to access and need to advocate for themselves, but we help them learn those self-advocacy skills as part of transition. We help the families to understand the different facets of the organizations and agencies. And we really strive for the student to be as independent as possible throughout all of the domains of transition. And really, the domains include community connections, things like how is a student going to recreate, what are their hobbies going to be, what kind of leisure activities might they have, post-secondary vision, connecting to community colleges, universities, online training, other, other types of training that have yet to be discovered, including, you know, virtual this and anything you can think of that's coming down the future. Employment is always the focus of people when they think of transition because employment seems to be the end goal for everyone. Everyone wants to have a place to go that they can succeed and belong. And that's really, we work very, very attentively to train and place and support young people in their employment goals, whether that's a paid job in a competitive environment, a volunteer job might be their personal measure of success. Maybe it's a piece rate job and we link up with one of the community agencies like a Grand Traverse Industry that offers that kind of other type of employment where they have a deviated wage scale. We work throughout that. Another, the two other domains of the adult living, how is a student going to understand how to become a citizen? What about housing? And that's really tied in with the CMH system and also the daily living skills, just the functional daily living skills that we all take for granted. How is, how am I going to feed myself? What is nutrition all about? How do I shop? How do I get around? What is, you know, what are my options for mobility? How do I access the transportation system? So all of those things is, are what makes up transition. And we're really happy to have a very active group in town and amongst the five counties that works hard to help these students really realize and belong and succeed in their communities that they access.
Let me put you on the spot for a moment.
Sure.
Mimi works for the five county area of the ISD and we actually were in a meeting earlier, earlier today for a student who is a Traverse City school student, however, does not live within the Grand Traverse region. And I think it quickly became apparent, at least to me, how great it is to live in this region for students or young adults that may have a disability and all of the things that they have access to that perhaps some in a smaller out county do not. So wouldn't you say that we're the best, Mimi?
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly.
I'm a Traverse City supporter, I'm not saying anything else.
It really is very important though, that when we think about our community partners and for TCAPs, huge partner is TBA ISD. The services that they provide for our students where it is the local education agency's responsibility to provide FATE. Without the low incident programs, we would still be providing FATE. We would have to figure out how to do that. When I think about some of the disabilities, blindness comes into mind for me because it is such an expensive type of disability to educate with orientation and mobility, with brailing, which is very expensive, the equipment that comes with it, the actual teaching of braille. And I think about being able to access a department that has specialists on staff is so valuable to us as a district. So thank you guys for that.
Appreciate that.
Do you have any questions for us? Kind of overwhelming, isn't it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
That was it for me.
Thank you all. We are at the discussion motion portion of our agenda. The first item on this portion of our agenda is the proposed adoption of resolution in support or non-support of the Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District General Fund Budget for 2013, 2014. Would someone like to make a motion to open the discussion? Or make a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution in support of the Traverse City, Traverse Bay Area ISD District General Fund Budget for 2013, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we discussed this issue last Monday night and would anyone like to start the discussion tonight before we take a vote?
I assume we've had no negative developments over the last twelve, or seven days or so since we last talked about it?
No, it's been positive. The superintendents committee that was working on looking at distribution of fund equity met again last week, came together around a formula that was taken to the full superintendents group. Chris Davis attended that meeting for us. I was stricken with the stomach flu and was at home. It was received well by the superintendents group. The next step would be for that to go to the ISD board. They're going to have a special meeting to talk about it. But it really looks at more than just the general fund. It looks at all three of the major funds. And I will, you know, without getting into specifics, there was a lot of agreement by the superintendents group that worked on it in regard to putting some standards down around how much working capital the ISD would keep, which I would, working capital's typical of what we would all think of as fund balance, money available to be used for things that you, for cash flow and things like that. And then also another fund set aside for facilities because we, that's a need that they have where we don't really want them to go out and be running bond issues, that they set that money aside from the funding that comes in through the tax base. And those were the two big chunks to the pieces that were there. We made, you know, I can't say enough about the progress we made. I thought it was a really transparent conversation, really healthy. I thought Mike Hill did a really good job of participating in it. He brought in an independent facilitator so that he could participate with the rest of the superintendents and not have to lead it. And I fully anticipate that we'll see their board act on that, from everything that Mike has shared back with the superintendents group.
Steve, do you know when their board is going to be addressing this?
No, the date that was put out was within about two weeks, so.
And yet they want us to vote on their budget prior to them agreeing to what the superintendents are, have come up with.
The timelines was put down by the legislature when they developed this process back, when they put it in place. So they, the idea was that boards would weigh in on the ISD's budget, the general fund budget before the June thirtieth date arrived. So really, the process that we're following is driven by the statutes in the state of Michigan. This, this issue of when they have their meeting is a byproduct of the pace we've gone through as superintendents, really.
So are you saying this would take effect for budget year 2013, 2014?
Yes, yeah.
You know, I would like to support the work that's been done by the superintendents. It seems like it's reasonable from everything I've read about it. And yet we, the board could say no, and yet we have sort of given our blanket approval. I guess I'm wondering if there's a way that we can say yes, assuming you accept what the superintendents have recommended.
Well, I think that, you know, there's, there's no in-between in regard to, the legislature didn't put in the statute that there would be an interim step. So there's basically this step at the end of each fiscal year going into the next year. And I think, I think that the steps that they have taken warrant support. If something goes awry in the next two weeks and the, the process that we outlined as superintendents isn't addressed, we always have the option next year of, of not supporting their budget. But I think that, again, Mike Hill's done a good job of turning his perspective around and really trying to move this forward quickly. And I've been very appreciative of that. If they had wanted to drag their feet, he could have done a lot more to drag their feet to get way beyond this date, so.
I'm gonna just, I've, this is my fourth year on the board and every year, we've had these budgets and for the past, for every year that I've been on the board, the ISD has put more than three million dollars each year into its total fund balance. The fund balance in this budget, I calculate is forty-five percent. I regret not voting no the past years. And last board meeting, I asked about accountability of the ISD's board and our next discussion motion item is to authorize Megan to go vote on candidates. I saw one has been on the board since ninety-five. There's no opposition. I did a little bit of research on the school code. The only, right now because the local boards elect the ISD boards, or our locals elect our, the ISD board members, we're the one, we're the only people who they're accountable to. There is a provision in the school code, they could be elected by popular vote. If a majority of the constituent boards voted and also represented at least half of the people count of the ISD, it could be, they could be accountable to the voters. Right now, the only people they're accountable to is us and the other boards of the region. Megan has come, every monthly board meeting, she reports, we can't even get a regional ISD board meeting to talk about this stuff. And I, I cannot in good conscience vote yes. And I, it doesn't even matter what we do, but we have a responsibility to taxpayers who are paying taxes every year and going into these funds, they're supposed to be used to benefit students and they're not. And I, I mean, to say that the process has been transparent, I completely disagree. Completely. And then to see a statement that, that there could be bill backs, I consider that a threat. And to have budgets, their total fund balance is over sixty percent and to read a threat that we might be billed back for services that our kids are supposed to be getting, I can't, I can't do it.
And this is something that Leland has been a leader on for years and every year, pretty much for as long as I can remember, they vote no. And they say, we don't believe that you're supporting us enough and we don't think, we have unfunded special ed payments that you have fund balance and you have more fund balance than anyone else in this region. Why aren't you spreading the money? And I've been questioning this since before I was elected. I haven't pushed as much the last few years because it's, it does seem frustratingly inconsequential what we choose to do, but I appreciate that there is finally some movement. But for goodness sakes, how long? How long has this been? And I agree with Kelly that no one else is paying attention to what the ISD is doing and what the board is doing. Just even how one goes about being elected to the board or applying to the board, none of that comes out. And they control large budgets. Obviously, this general fund budget, this whole deal is one more thing that the legislature came up with on a whim, it seems. And I, I don't know that voting no will do much positive and it may in fact upset people that feel they're finally making movement if we were to vote no on this. But then again, I'm kind of over it. I'm, I feel like we've been nice for a long, long time and I'm kind of tired of being nice about it.
Well, Steve, let me ask the question. I mean, obviously saying, voting no or yes is not going to have a major impact on the ISD other than the message being delivered. Are we to a point, and are these negotiations real enough and substantial enough that we should ride this thing out and see what's going on? I mean, is that ultimately what our goal in this is, as Kelly refers to, is to be able to tap some of that excessive fund balance the ISD currently has? I guess the question is, is this a monumental step that you're, they're about to take if they agree with the superintendents?
Yeah, there are no other formulas like this that I know of in this state through ISDs. There are some ISDs that have policies that say that superintendent has the ability to distribute funds from their excess each year, but there's nothing that's, that I know of that has a formula attached to it like this that would become our practice. Yeah, I think there's been a lot of momentum. And in regard to my comments about transparency, I don't deny that there has been a lack of transparency in budgets in general. My comments about transparency are when we were in the room, we were looking at real numbers. And that's a change from before in regard to comments that have been made about the budget. There wasn't, there was, we were looking at audited numbers and the, and Mike Hill, the superintendent, was doing a good job of making sure that we were looking at audited numbers, so.
My point is that, about transparency, is that these are public monies. They're paid for by taxpayers. And to have, to say it's transparent for a group of superintendents to meet in a room and come up with an agreement, good, bad, or whatever, we're the ones who are elected. We have elected the ISD board and it's, it's our responsibility. It's ultimately the board, the boards approve the budgets.
The superintendent's recommendation will go to a public meeting and that's where the, their board will determine whether it'll be talked about publicly, they'll determine what they're going to do with it. I don't see a lack of transparency in that process. That's very similar to how budgets get developed here. We sit down as administrators, we look at the numbers, we bring them to our finance committee who who scrutinizes them, and then the board makes that final decision. At the end of the day, their board will make that final decision. The vote to go to the point is perfunctory in the sense that there is no consequence, one way or the other, other than the publicity it will get. But I, you know, I will continue to characterize that the work that was done over the last week and a half, there's certainly room for argument that it is years late. Certainly, 62% fund equity is too high. This is something that should have been addressed before. But the work over the last two weeks has been good work. And it has created momentum toward a significant change. And if it gets done, it is going to be a much different system than you would see in most ISDs throughout the state, if any.
Steve, is most of our issue around their special ed budget?
No.
Or is it around their general fund budget? Or, I mean, my understanding is they have a number of different budgets. Where is our biggest beef, so to speak?
It's pretty equally across the board. I use the special ed one when I talk about it, simply because I think that's easy to understand in regard to, there's less restrictions, I shouldn't say that, there's restrictions on special ed money, but it makes sense to people. You have the special ed program at a local level, you're paying for it. The ISD is putting money into fund equity, and that money should be available to pay for those local services that you're providing. I think it's a little harder for people to understand the general ed fund because you're getting into things like business operations and professional development assessments. So, I use, but all three of them have healthy fund equities. In addition to the set aside for facilities that they have and another set aside for a legal issue that they have with the pollution, that eventually, if that, when that's resolved, that would go into fund equity. But, you know, I think there's certainly room for criticism in regard to how they have gone about the transparency in the public's eye in regard to their budget. I mean, we have, most districts have let this slide by.
Well, I looked at my property tax bill from last summer, and the TBA is second to the county. I mean, people are past millages to educate kids.
I don't disagree with the issues and the frustrations that have been there in the past. I do tend, I think, in a case of making a change in the direction that an organization is going and the methods by which they go through things and they look at things, and making a paradigm shift in the change of direction, or at least the potential of a paradigm shift, is one that I think is, should be encouraged, as I do believe it will benefit TCAPS and the community. And is one that I don't, I would be hesitant to discourage at this time, given we are, we're hopefully on the edge of making a significant change. I think, encouraging that, and supporting that, tracking that, and building momentum off of that change and ensuring to the best that we can and monitoring that we continue to move in a direction that maybe we should have started moving, maybe if we, years ago. But it's hard seeing myself in a position on a board and wanting to do the right thing and make moves in the right direction to discourage or condemn at a point that things haven't been done in the past while they're being tried to be done now.
So, you think it would discourage them from continuing? Or it would be enough of a precaution, maybe?
I think it's hard to, for me to make a vote today based on the last five years, when the last five weeks or whatever, we're starting to see motion in the direction that we want. I can't look and see if we don't get the movement that we believe is, we're on the edge of. If that occurs, that that isn't what we want and movement in that direction. I, making that type of vote now, other than the fact that you only get one chance a year to do it, it's, the timing is, the impact of what we're trying to say, I think, is offset by the timing and the challenge of that.
And yet, I agree, but ultimately, what we're being asked to vote on is a very black and white budget. It's not what is projected or might happen or what the work that's being sort of done in this back room that we are all in support of. It is a budget before us, and it's a budget that none of us think is an appropriate budget. So, is it our position to say, "Yes, okay, we approve this budget", hoping that you're going to make these changes and not actually approve the budget that we're presented with?
Because really, what would we be hoping, hoping for this next budget compared to what's on here? Would any transfers to the districts that we're hoping to see, would that be coming out of this at all, in addition to what's here, what's listed? So, we're hoping that they would be changing the budget after we approve this one? Or is it already included? Because I'm seeing that while they're spending down slightly this fund balance, they still would be at around 40, 45%.
The process we looked at was going forward using audited funds. So, the projection for next year's budget, so take the amount that would be drawn down that TCAPS would benefit from. It would be based on the budget they currently have, and it would be a projection. When their audit was finished and it was approved, which would be November, and that's what we would plug into our budget, would be the projection. In November, after their audit was approved and we had audited numbers going backward, so they don't change because you have that money available. A group would get together, look at it, determine the distribution based on what's been agreed, which is a five-year drawdown. So, you don't draw it all down once you draw it down over five years. And that would be the amount that would go to districts. We would amend our budgets based on what the difference was between what we put in for the projection, based on what they had now, and then what came in at the audit, just like we do with our budget each year. We put a projection out there, and then we amend it when we actually get hard data in. They would have to do the same thing with their budget. They would have to go back and do an amendment to it.
Which would then be approved by us, again?
No.
Amendments on their budget would be, ultimately, at the end of the year, when we got to the budget approval process, we would be approving the budget going forward, so.
So, that hasn't been taken in account here? And it would be an amendment that, I'm assuming, would come, we generally do our first amendment in January. So, a December-January amendment from them would be reasonable and, which they may or may not choose to do again, so.
And we have no say on...
Right, right.
For that, their amendment at that point for the distribution wouldn't matter. We would be looking at their audit from the previous year. And so, the amendment that they would have to make would be for their books during that current year. When we looked at the distribution, it would be from, so, let's just use the actual numbers. So, they will close out their books June 30th for 1213. They'll go through an audit. When that, we will base, we would base our projections on what the funding coming from the ISD would be based on how they closed their books out for June 30th before the audit. So, whatever that budget is as of June 30th. When their audit is finished for the previous year, we would actually be drawing down funds from that fund equity based on that audit from the previous year.
But it would still be distributed in the next budget?
It would be distributed, we would be looking at an audit from the 1213 school year.
Right.
It would be distributed in the 1314 school year.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is the budget we're being asked to approve.
And that's only if their board agrees to the recommendations that come out of the superintendent's committee.
That's right, that's right.
So, what we're being asked, as far as I understand, is to approve a budget, not based on what's coming out of this recommendation, and we're saying yes. We agree with it, but we don't. I mean, what we agree with is what's coming out of the superintendent's recommendation.
And so, and we can't attach a rider saying, "We really, really hope that you'll make an amendment in January and give us money." I mean, that's really ultimately what we're hoping will happen, right?
Yeah. Their board had a meeting last Tuesday. I looked at the agenda, it wasn't on their agenda.
Well, they may be waiting for the recommendation before it comes out. But I think that, you know, we can, the only hesitation that I have at all is that we're sending a message, "We're really mad, we're frustrated, we're not going to support this." And so, what would be the repercussions of that kind of a statement to them by not approving this? Are they going to say, "Oh, well, then, we're not going to accept the superintendent recommendations"? Maybe, but they might say that anyway. I mean, really, what we have to do is go to the board meeting, and we have to get other people to go to the board meeting and make our voices heard, it seems.
But bottom line, Margie, I think you make the point that this, what is presented to us, if we look at only what's in black and white, is not something I agree with. What, I mean, bottom line, do I agree with this, yes or no? Do I, am I hopeful? Yes. Do I want them to pay for, you know, past transgressions with this vote? A little bit, you know, but...
No, that's not what we're asking.
Yeah, no. I mean, what we're being asked to vote on is black and white. If this were our budget and we were voting on it, we'd be saying, "This is what we agree with."
Exactly.
So, if that's what they're going to give us, and that's what we have to approve, we have to decide, "Do we agree with this document here, yes or no?" Is that fair?
That's how I'm interpreting it.
Well, I do think back to Eric's point. What we're sort of missing also is the secondary message being delivered in this. And that is, I mean, and Kelly, I completely agree with you about what's transpired in the past. I guess it's a matter of whether we have faith and confidence that what the superintendents came up with and what Mike Hill is assuredness of is actually going to transpire. And I'd like to reinforce that movement somehow. What I don't want to do is disrupt it if we can. So, you're right, Julie, it's a black and white budget, and I don't like or accept what's there in terms of the fund balance that's there. However, there seems to have been progress made, and I also don't want to do anything that doesn't deliver a message that I do support that. And I like the direction, at least allegedly, we're headed in.
Make another motion to support the superintendent's...
Right, I mean, maybe the motion is that we do not agree with this budget, but we do agree with supporting this, and we don't approve or disapprove, we just don't vote on it. Or we, you know, come back with another budget, and we're happy to vote.
Does this have to be approved or disapproved tonight?
It has to be by, it says that by June 1st.
We don't have another meeting.
We don't have another meeting.
I guess I'm just, and I know I could be accused of being bullheaded, but I don't like to, I don't feel like we have to beg for the intermediate school district to use the money for the purposes that the taxpayers are paying the taxes for, and...
And I think that's what the superintendents have been moving to try and address.
We hope.
We hope.
We haven't, we don't even have that proposal. I mean, we have an outline, but I'm not comfortable voting on a motion of something that may or may not happen. Hasn't been vetted.
And I think that it goes back to, you know, my question was, so, what's in here doesn't, what they've presented to us for our approval, doesn't reflect the work that's being done currently. And while I certainly have every hope that that's going to continue, we represent roughly half the students in the ISD. And maybe it's a symbolic thing to vote no, but I don't agree with the budget that they've put forth. And while I hope that they continue to make progress, I can't count on it. And that's not what they've given us. So, we have a motion to support that's been seconded, and that's on the floor currently.
I have a question. Isn't it true that it doesn't, if everybody, if all the locals were to vote down this budget, they could still go ahead and approve it? So, it's really only a symbolic vote?
It's just a message, right? So, let's vote on it.
Let's have a roll call vote. And could you repeat the motion, so everyone's clear?
Moved by Puckett, supported by Hardy, to adopt the resolution in support of the Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District General Fund Budget for 2013-14.
Do we want public comment on this?
Oh, yes, wait, stop. Sorry. We'd like to invite anyone from the audience who would like to make public comment on this item. You are invited to step forward at this time. Okay, Kena.
Ms. Crandall?
No.
Mr. Falconer?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Puckett?
No.
Ms. Rich?
No.
And Ms. Hall?
No.
Eric, our boat just sunk.
Okay, the next item is, second discussion motion item on the agenda this evening is the adoption of a resolution to designate an electoral representative and alternate for the TBA ISD's June 3rd, 2013 biennial election. Could I have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution to designate Megan Crandall as the representative of the board for the electoral body, which body will elect three candidates to the vacancies on the ISD board on Monday, June 3rd, 2013, and Scott Hardy as an alternate in the event that the designated representative is unable to attend. I guess I also have to make that other?
Yeah.
The designated representative and alternate are further directed to cast a vote on the first ballot on behalf of this board for Joseph Fisher, Robert McColl, and Renee McCollie.
Second.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Steve, I asked last meeting about the three Traverse City representatives. Why do we have three if statute says we can only have two?
I don't know. In the last weekend, I didn't touch base with Mike and ask him after I got sick. The only thing I can think of is that they had a replacement at some point because somebody went off the board, so.
So, all three of these board members are current board members, and they have no challenges, is that correct? So, no one chose to file to run?
Makes your job easy, doesn't it?
And then, did you find out the answer to whether a member of a board of a local school district can serve on the ISD board?
I believe we found out that they could.
Well, I'd like a follow-up on the three, because if it was, if it, my reading of the school code says that if someone is appointed at the next election, there's supposed to be another election.
You want to call Renee tomorrow, I know. We'll talk to him tomorrow.
So, does this affect the motion at this, Mike Hill?
No.
Okay.
Any discussion about these candidates or the nomination of Megan to serve as our electorate with Scott as alternate?
Did anyone provide any information about this?
There was brief resumes in our...
I see, that's right, I did see that.
They've all been members of the ISD board for some time. And none are from Traverse City. One is from Elk Rapids, one is from Calcasca, and the other is from where?
Benzi.
Frank Alberta.
Okay, all those, oh, would anyone like to make public comment on this item? Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. We're now at the consent portion of our agenda. There's only one item on our consent calendar. It is the approval of minutes from our board regular meeting that we held last Monday evening. Could I, do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. We're now at the study session portion of our agenda, and I'll defer to Mr. Cousins.
Uh, Mr. Nybor is going to do a presentation tonight on our, uh, virtual field trips, and I think he's brought a crew with him to do that, so... Crew of one.
Plus, Kena's bringing that up for us. Steffi Lay is our elementary librarian, and she's joined us here tonight to kind of go through the process of the virtual field trips. There's, there's a couple other facets to using the, uh, the video conferencing equipment that we have, but she's been the one who's, uh, who's led the effort, certainly at the elementary schools, though, to bring them into several different programs that she'll just describe. We have a short video, too, that will, can give you a glimpse into the classroom where it's being used. But it's been a really, really nice addition for our schools to be able to basically be in contact with people, go places, learn things that they wouldn't have an opportunity otherwise. I think a bus field trip to Borneo would probably be beyond what our budget could bear about now, so... With that, Steffi.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The Polycom equipment, if, just a quick definition or explanation, it's very similar to Skyping, but it is equipment that allows a whole class to see and hear very clearly and has other advantages that make it very user-friendly in a classroom setting. First, I want to just talk about why do we use the Polycom equipment to do virtual field trips? And the Polycom equipment can be used for virtual field trips as well as making connections. And on a field trip, you're making a connection, but when we say connections, that's connecting to another class to share work or to meet a pen pal face-to-face. Where a field trip would be going to a location through the Polycom equipment and interacting with someone there in real time. This is a, a class at Old Mission connecting with, actually in district, so they are connecting to Central Grade. So, connections can happen in district, out of district, internationally, and then field trips can be anywhere in the world. Some of the reasons that we use Polycom equipment and TCAPS, it gives our students an audience that's outside of their classroom. It's an authentic audience of their peers who they can share work with. Often, that's a good encouragement for their very best work to come out. Through the connections, we've also done for a number of years, Read Around the Planet, which is during March's Reading Month, and the students are sharing activities that celebrate reading, both internationally and with kids in, all over our country. Some of the other reasons that we use the Polycom, it provides our students with different perspectives on what life is like somewhere else in the world or across a different region. And that, I think, if you ask students who have done a Polycom connection, the, the chance to ask questions is pretty valuable, and they see how much is the same and what might be a little bit different. But the kids always really are excited to say, "Okay, what's, what is this like at your school, and how do you do this?" And hearing from a student instead of reading about it from the perspective of an adult or hearing about it from an adult is very valuable. And it increases their understanding and appreciation of not only international differences, but regional differences as well. Our Polycom equipment allows students at all levels to interact with experts. We're using the Polycom equipment in our two middle schools for the Anashinaabe instruction. The instructor goes from site to site, but the kids at the site where the, the instructor is not present are learning via the Polycom and can ask questions in the same way. We've used the Polycom equipment for author visits, where our students are able to ask the author live questions about their work or how they were into the writing process or even fun questions about their favorite books. It's a chance to interact with someone on a personal level. You may be aware that our high schools for a number of years, at least at Central, have been viewing knee surgeries live. I'm happy that I have not been viewing the knee surgeries live, but a wonderful experience for students. Other examples of interaction with experts, one of our elementaries just a few weeks ago was interacting with NASA, able to ask questions of an astronaut. And all of the reasons that we use it really do encompass making the impossible possible because our kids can do things that they may not be otherwise able to do. And, and like Todd mentioned, last year, a class at Blair visited a primate reserve in Borneo through the Polycom and were able to ask questions and take in that environment. And that would be a tough field trip for many reasons. Some of the field trips are even beyond what a, a field trip you might be able to see on a traditional field trip because the interactions through the Polycom are often behind the scenes. They get to see parts of the museum or the historical place or the zoo that you might not see on a regular tour, a regular field trip. And next, we have a, a short video, and it's focusing mostly on classroom connections in this video, and it's at a number of our, uh, elementary schools, and I think a little bit at one of the knee surgeries.
Yeah, if you, if you missed the knee surgery, that's okay. It, it shows up there quickly, but, um, you know, what's so interesting about that when they first, uh, first did that is the thought that, I was thinking they were going to have some kind of, maybe even afterwards, go talk to the, uh, the surgeon, or maybe they were going to have a medical tech or something who answered. They actually let the kids ask questions during the surgery. The surgeon talks to them as they're doing. They must be pretty good at it, I guess, because they... And then, at the end, they do have more question-and-answer time, and everybody who's in the surgical room describes, says who they are, and they describe what they do. And so, they get a perspective on all those different career fields beyond just what, you know, the surgeon is doing, but they find out what all the support people do, and the anesthesiologist, and, um, the nurses, and everybody else that's in there, too. So, that's, that one, to me in particular, was like, wow. You, you could hardly get better than a first-row seat there, so...
Can you hear us?
We can. Hello?
We're using a Polycom unit, which is a video conferencing unit. This technology opens us up to many opportunities for students. The main part is that students are able to connect with kids who they can relate to in real time. It's amazing for them to see outside of where we are in our lives, our physical place, differences around the world. Now, do we have a school bus?
We don't have a school bus here.
How long is it?
And our day starts at 8:30 and ends at 3:28.
Being able to relate to a child on the other end of the world and see that we're all the same. Makes it possible for the children to, um, have a better global understanding of issues and a chance to discuss those and to share in those with other people.
And it's exciting to think about as opportunities become more common. There are offerings all the time that are new opportunities for students across the world. It's also a nice technology to think about using for enrichment activities that there are a number of places that would be wonderful for possibly an inside recess time or an after-school visit to the Hall of Fame for football or something that you just wouldn't get to do on a, on a normal basis, on a day-to-day basis. It's, it's seeing at this stage that it's really taking off all over, and it's exciting to see what opportunities we will have to provide through what we have in place, the Polycom equipment we have. And it, it sounds trite, but it sort of seems like sky's the limit because there's so much we can do with it.
Do the other, does the other location have to have the same equipment and software that we do to make this work?
They can do it a few different pathways, but typically, they do. The connections that we make, typically, they do.
There's, uh, some of the organizations, uh, deal mostly with Polycom units. Those, the newer ones actually have connection capabilities to lots of different devices, and there is some standard, standardization in the video. What they can't do is, you know, you can't necessarily connect to like a, just a computer someplace else. One of the advantages the Polycom has is, uh, the microphone itself is specially designed. It's very, very sensitive. You can put it in the middle of a classroom of kids. You can hear every kid from whatever corner. And the, the camera is, is set so that you get a very wide angle, so it's easier for, to get a whole class together. So, that's one of the particular reasons. It's nice to have that. But there are some of them that you can set up through organizations that we belong to that can just use Skype as well, so... This one is, uh, this one has been pretty popular, though. The TWICE organization, Two-Way Interactive Communication and Education, is a Michigan, uh, it started in Michigan, anyway, but it's got members from around the world who coordinate different kinds of activities.
Do all of our schools have Polycom equipment?
They have access to it. We have, um, a few devices at, at Rome, and then we have some that are fixed at different sites.
Is it expensive?
For the, uh, the relative payoff that you get out of it? I don't think so.
Another adjust.
So that, do we need to keep them roaming, or could we afford potentially to get one in every school?
I'll describe the plan that we've kind of got going with them. They're about $4,000 to buy one of the Polycom units. But what we've done is basically started, we've started pitching the idea, and Steffi's been out there beating the pavement with it for the last few years. And as a school starts to develop, um, a routine around using it, then we start to think about, well, one, the cost of actually running somebody out to make sure that every, all the hookups work and everything versus just giving them their own so that they're free then to expand. So, it's been kind of growing organically as schools use them more and more. We'll actually get to a threshold where we'll say, "You know what? It's probably a good idea if we just station one there, and then we'll buy another one to fulfill the roaming duties that they have." So, they, but they do. They travel all over the district, and, uh, so we've been growing it like that. It is something that, uh, we've, I've looked at budgeting and within our bond funds, and so, as, on, as-needed basis. So, we bought two last year. The previous year, we didn't buy, buy any as we were really starting to get started. And we had two units originally that the ISD had given us a number of years ago that weren't at the time, anyway, that I found them getting a ton of use. And so, we started researching and found these organizations so that we could start giving this opportunity out to the schools.
Where are you seeing the direction and opportunities to developing the network come from? I mean, is it through the association that you mentioned, and, "Oh, there's a school out there, and we're a school, let's pair up," or is it through personal contacts or connections that you have? And, "Okay, let's just figure out a way to get a device there so we can make that connection." Where, where is it going? Is it organic, or is it through organizations?
Well, TWICE, TWICE is really the first place to look for connections and field trips. And one thing to mention about the way the site is organized, the field trips will connect to content standards and be rated by teachers in terms of, you know, "This is a favorite. This really worked with." My, you know, all rated by grade level and, and connected to content. TWICE is just the one that makes the most sense for us right now in Michigan, but there are other agencies like that. I've had contact with district, distance learning coordinators in other districts, and I, I always ask them, you know, "Where do you go for your, where are your best connections?" And more and more, places like, there's a, there's a school in Atlanta that does puppetry, and they've really, they've really expanded what they offer for virtual field trips. So, um, that's just an example. So, there are, you know, kind of clearinghouses that coordinate, but there are also lots and lots of groups or historic places, Colonial Williamsburg, all, you know, museums, zoos, and historic places all are really starting to, and many have well-established programs. In terms of making just a personal connection to another classroom, you know, some of that can be just, "Okay, you know someone who teaches, someone you know is in China teaching. You can connect that way." But, um, I would say it's growing organically because there's interest.
When we connect with a museum or a zoo or some other place like that, do we have to pay?
It depends on the site. Many of them are free. I guess, at the same time, some of them are not. The, the, the prices are pretty minimal. I mean, the cost is pretty minimal. You know, maybe it's a hundred dollars. So, if you're going to take an actual field trip, it would be, it's, it's, they're really mostly free on TWICE, too. Author visits are often free, and, um, it just depends.
Yeah, TWICE, they have, uh, in addition to the, they have a big database, basically. As Steffi mentioned, that teachers have not only used that to find stuff, but rated them afterwards, and so you have a teacher-reviewed kind of, um, list of activities. But they also do, um, classroom-to-classroom connections as well. So, you can put out there a proposal, "I'd like somebody to, to go over, we want to learn about, uh, you know, something in the southern hemisphere," or they might say South America, or name a country, whatever it may be. And they're looking for a particular type of collaboration. So, TWICE can then serve as a, um, a way to connect those people who have a particular interest as well, aside from just the field trips that they have. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you both. We're now at the discussion portion of our agenda, and, um, Mr. Cousins will lead a, start a discussion about, um, a potential bond election.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Soma. There were a couple of questions, uh, I think, that, uh, we were charged with answering, and, um, he's, he's been working on that, so Paul?
Yeah, um, there's two, two items to, to address, and, and one of them that I want to address is part of the dialogue, and certainly, let's have dialogue about this. One is, um, property tax information that we got this, this, um, or Friday. Yeah, thank you. And, uh, so I'll save that for second. The first is some question we received from a board member relative to pacing of a potential project at Central Grade School. If it could be paced, uh, in such a fashion that the work could be done during the summer. And so, start right at the end of the school year, get as much work done during the summer, and, and go to whatever lengths that we may need to go to. That would mean multiple-hour days, like, um, uh, extra 12-hour, 14-hour days, working on weekends, seven-day-a-week type of, type of, um, construction. We looked at that. We looked at that with our, um, architect, and I, and I'm sure John is, yeah, John is here with, with Paul. We've studied this issue, and the, the, the short answer is no, not possible. There's a number of issues as to why not. I'll give some highlights, and then certainly, if there's more details that you'd like, we could, we could, I'd, I'd ask John and Paul to come up again and, and talk about this. But, uh, phase construction with the extended hours. First of all, that, that potentially could be a problem with the city noise ordinances. And we know the Central Grade, uh, Central neighborhood, um, you know, we have issues even with our snowplows in the winter. We know relative to, that's very close to a lot of, uh, homes there. And so, the noise ordinances might be a problem. Again, this is, uh, the, the other issue, some other issues on an ancillary basis. No film festival could be there, obviously. No, no childcare or, or, or central day, any, any daycare programs or summer school camps, um, or any other community events, obviously, could be, be done there. That's, that's another, another issue. The, 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 the work itself is too extensive to be done in that short timeframe, even with extra hours. And I could read this, but the, but the... And I could read this, but the, but the, how, it just doesn't have enough time to do the stuff like asbestos removal, interior demolition, insulation of building systems, plumbing, piping, major heating distribution, fire suppression, ductwork, lighting, electrical distribution, along with construction of new walls, ceilings, and floorings. The code compliance is a big issue, because what you have to do is when you're working on those systems, you have to leave them exposed until inspectors can come through. And then if you were trying to do that all in a two-month timeframe, you could not, get all that work done, have the inspectors come in, look at it, make corrections, put it back together. It would, the work doesn't lend itself. So I could go on. If you want more detail, I'd feel more comfortable certainly we should have John and Paul to come up to answer. But that's the gist of, of the, of the answer to that question. And I certainly think I'd be able to answer some more if we had questions.
Regardless of when Central Grade is done, whether it's in three months or in a year, aren't some of those things still true? Like, would they still be able to use the Lars Hoxstedt for the film festival, for example?
Probably not when we get around to that.
So it's true regardless?
Well, the question had to do with every summer.
Can it, yes, yeah.
So we would do, what, four, five summers in a row or something like that?
Okay, so you're thinking continued summers of unavailability?
Correct. As opposed to one?
Mm-hmm.
Does the, I know you said you're going to get to the property tax information subsequently, but does the increase in property values offer any opportunity to speed up projects and get Central in quicker?
Well, I'll share that exact information, and then you can, yes. Well, what it does is it decreases the millage impact. So that's, that's the answer. And so whether, you know, that'll be something for you to consider, and I can share that information right now if you'd like, maybe, then you can see.
Well, let's, do you want to do that and then talk about Central more? How do you guys want to? Why don't we get the facts out, and then it'll be a more productive discussion?
This is very late-breaking news, and this, this was just put together this afternoon, in fact, right before the meeting. And I just wanted to summarize it when you, when you get around. Wish I could put this up and share it, but I'll describe it, and hopefully people can understand. The, what we presented last week, in fact, maybe I will turn to, to a page here, and you can kind of follow along. It's down in the... So, this was, okay, and I'm just working from these two slides, and I guess you can see the, see the two ballot questions and the recommendation. That main proposal, and, and I wanted to say, before talking too much, too deep into this, there's a lot of variables that go into this, and I don't want to get into all of that unless people want to talk about it. But, but relative to property values, that's a huge variable, obviously. We have information now that our property values increased 2.6%. That used to be a 1% estimate, so now it's 2.6. And then we went, kept all the rest of the variables the same as it relates to property values. So 2.6, 1, 1, 2, 3, 3, 3. Okay, so pretty conservative, I would say, over the course of time. The other variables involved in talking about millage impact is the impact on the current debt. You have current debt outstanding, that's rolling off, and then, then you have to make assumptions about debt coming on, and then what you can sell that debt at what interest rate. Again, we've been pretty lucky there. There's interest income on the debt funds, and then there's the principal pay-down calculations as it relates to amortization. We are, we have always sold 10-year bonds. These calculations include 20-year bonds. But within that, as, as you look at the variable, the financial advisor has to account for technology bonds and amortize those sooner. So there, there's a lot of things that go into the mix to get to these numbers. I want to say that, I think you know me generally as pretty conservative in showing numbers, I'm comfortable with these numbers, that they're conservative, that they're, they're, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, that's not true, but they're, they're pretty conservative estimates, given all of those variables that are out there. No one can predict exactly the future. So with that in mind, that first, the first, and I don't have my pointer with me, but the first, where it says main proposal, 35.2 million, that the, the 2.6% increase took .07 off of that. So that number is now .2 mils. Yes?
Is this the 2.6, are you considering that for this year, or are you compounding 2.6 for the next few years?
So, so it does compound because we changed the base year.
Right, but are you changing your predictions for going forward?
No.
Are you going back to a 1?
We go from 2.6, so that moves all the numbers up in the future. So it is compounding on its own, but we go back in our estimates to 1, 1, 2, 3, 3, 3. But, you know, that starting number, that does leverage into the future. Okay, so that's a .2. Now, the CHS auditorium, it doesn't change dramatically in this, and, and the best way I can say to describe that is that we, we put it all together in making the estimate, and then changed the beginning assumption, and the total then went from, the sum total of those two point, was .36, now it's down to .29. That's, so if you can kind of follow with that.
All the credit to the main proposal.
Basically, basically, that's how it was, it was scheduled out. All the credit to that, that first, and that .09. Again, there's, there's some, lot of estimates to go into that. The timing of when you sell those bonds, that the auditorium bonds would be sold two years from now, not next year, I'm sorry, three years from now. Not, so that has an impact of why that doesn't come down. The first bonds get sold right away. Do you see what I'm saying? All of that leverages itself. Now, the one thing that did not change is the impact of the acceleration. And we didn't, did we, I don't think we had this, oops, sorry. The impact of accelerating, which was a question that, that Mr. Faulkner had. If you accelerate the, the three elementaries, this pacing gets them done by 2019, so it's about basically six years out that all three would be done. If you accelerate that to get them done in four years, knocking two years off the schedule, the acceleration doesn't, is still .07. So that first proposal, the main proposal, .2, if you wanted to do it in an accelerated fashion, it's .27, which is the same number it was before. So it's a little confusing, but you understand what I'm saying, that, that the, the pacing of the projects, the .07s, doesn't change. It still impacts it the same way on the millage. The central grade impact, again, from a total that 25 million, oh, and so you can see the difference in the, in the acceleration, there's no new money, but it increases the rate, and you can see why, right? Because it's, you're borrowing more sooner. And that's why there's no new money needed, but you do need a higher impact. And then, you know, it kind of makes sense, there's a lot of variables, and they go back and forth in a lot of different ways, not back and forth, they, they tend to have different impacts as you look at them over the course of year, and, and, and look at when you're selling certain bonds out in 2017, what's rolling off, what's rolling on. The central grade, the 25 million in new is still a .18 impact on to the, to the schedule. So, and that kind of makes sense with auditorium being .09, at 12.9, and the central grade, .18. You can see that that, pretty close to being kind of a logical comparison, doesn't seem to always work out that way when you, when you, when you add all these variables in there, but this one does. And so, so then if you, if you look at this, there you go. I mean, that, that's it right there. You have .20 for the main proposal, .09, that stays the same under anything. The .09 for the auditorium, you can almost set that aside. And then what the board has to talk about and decide, I think, is some, is the pacing issue. Do you add the .07 for, if, well, among a lot of other things that you have to decide, one thing that you have to consider is, do you add the pacing at .07? And what do you do with the .18 that is the additional on top of that .7? Because remember, and we tried to explain this last week, you can't do the .18 without the .07. So that has to be, the .18 comes on top of the .07, not, will slow everything down, and you could, we talked about this last week again, but you can't go to the slower pace, the six-year pace, and then add Central Grade School in there too. Then Central Grade School goes out a couple more years, and now Central Grade School, that's a different, it's a different question, and we'd have to come back with a different number. And then you're back to more associated with our last bond issue that said, we'll do Central Grade eight or nine years out, and talk about the impact that way. So, I know this can get confusing, so I'll hopefully just ask for questions.
How, as, as we're talking about, that 2.6% increase in property values.
Yes.
We do have outstanding, we do have bonds that were authorized in 2007, that frankly, we couldn't sell as much as we had hoped to.
Right.
And we backed off of what we issued last year, what we put on the market last year because property values dropped. With the, how does the 2007, I don't want to muddy the waters, but just so I understand, how are, how is that 2007 authorization affected by increasing property values over and above what we had expected, considering our normal cycle would be to send, sell more bonds next spring?
Right. What that does is, and it's, it's a great question, I can't give specifics, but the general, generality of it holds true, that it speeds up things. It gets more projects, so we would be able to sell more bonds next year at a 3.1 mils than what, than what we had projected under a more conservative property tax growth rate.
Would that help, that help with the consideration of the accelerator clause? That's the way I'm looking at it, is would we really still need that .07 accelerator if we can sell more bonds under the 07? Because really, the 07 did, was supposed to be, part of that was supposed to pay for elementary reconstructs.
The point, that takes it into consideration, the .07 takes that into consideration. So, yes, you need the .07. We take the, the 2.6%, 2.6% increase is taken into consideration when developing the .07 estimate. So, I'm trying to think of another way to say it, is that it would have cost more if we didn't get 2.6.
By adjusting to .2, that's already considering that you're combining the two bond issues together. We can't do everything in that main proposal without combining the two together. So when we factor the .20, we're already factoring in the fact that there's 65 million in authorization there.
Right.
So it's dovetailed in. The big adjustment on this comes with the .2 instead of the other numbers, because that's driving the rest of this. Right?
Right, that's, that's exactly right, and, yes.
So, but we would be issuing bonds if, if we were to put a proposal on the board in November, and if it passed this year, we would be issuing bonds for both authorizations, but it's really just total money, right?
Right. What would happen is a year from now, we'd be selling bonds. I have a schedule somewhere about what, what the, oh, the total dollar amount would be.
Because last year we sold, what, 11.9, 11.4?
Right, that's just, exactly, and we'd be selling about $30 million a year from right now if we were to approve, let's just, just for, for discussion, the, the main proposal and the CHS auditorium, let's just assume that's what we went for, and that's what would pass, we'd be selling $30 million worth of bonds next year. I can tell you, and then if, if we were to speed up the program, we'd be selling $33 million worth of bonds next year. And I think it's important to see the next two series, so you can see where the money comes from. I have them labeled 1A and 1B, and Wes's out in his ear, and if I say something wrong, Wes, get up here. But we, he helps with the details of these numbers. So, under the, the non-speed-up, the non-sped-up approach, 29.455, 29.5 million, and then 26.6. Under the speed, the quicker approach, 33 million, and then 33.6 million over the next two sales. And you can see, and then that's where, where the dollars would, would come to start speeding those projects up. And you can go out one more, and you'd see that, that pace continue.
When you say the speed-up approach, are you saying that the three elementaries, Interlock and Glenlumis and Eastern, would be completed in six years? Is that thus?
It's, it would be completed, um...
It would be consecutive.
It'd be consecutive.
One would run at the same time if, as Central High School, right?
Yep, so they'd be consecutive. So you'd be breaking ground next year on the first one, and then you could think about breaking ground, work on it for a full year, then, then, then you would be in that building that next year, and that would go on three years in a row. So from the time we sell the first bonds, which is a year from right now, the three elementaries would be constructed in four years, right?
And that is, the .07 mils is associated with that?
Correct. Versus six years.
And it would also draw in the central grade. It would put central grade, it, because really, would we want to do the acceleration, this is maybe more of a board question, would we want to, is it worth the money to accelerate that third elementary reconstruct by one calendar year? Is it worth .07 mils to the community to speed it up by one year? Or would that really be just to get central grade? Is it then worth it to get central grade in on that sixth year as opposed to holding it out on a different basis?
That gets to the question that I was leading to. Is the .07 mils incrementally necessary if central grade is not on, in the mix?
If you want to do those three elementaries in the shortened timeframe, it is still necessary incrementally. Okay, that, that's kind of independent, and then, then, then you have to look at then, well, you guys get it, because then you'd add, then you'd be doing central grade right after that, one-year delay for the extra millage. And, and again, you know, as, as I talk about all the variables, the, there's a lot more certainty in the shorter projections. And so, so just, just know that. There's a lot more certainty, and when I say 2.0 and 2, and .27, I'm real confident in that, confident in that, I'm confident in the .09. When you're talking about then the impact of, you know, adding a $25 million in, in about four years or so, you know, I think I'm even, I'm a little conservative on saying that .18. I don't want to say to you .18 and have it come into to .24. You know, I don't want to do it now, if I say .18 and it comes in at .14, that's possible. You know, if we have, you know, I wish I could tell you that. If the, if the property values go .26, you know, 2.6, 2.6, 2.6, you know, it's not going to be .18, it's going to be less than that. But I can't say that to you right now, because, you know, for the reasons I just indicated, at least comfortably.
This is just sort of occurring to me, and maybe it's not terribly important, but I'm still worried about central grade, and would still love to figure out a way to get that taken care of and, and have the money dedicated to it. I'm wondering, would we need to adjust other buildings? I'm thinking Glenlumis, so Glenlumis is slated, that's one of the three that would be reconstructed. Eastern's another one that would be reconstructed. I'm trying to figure out where we would send the entire population of central grade the year that it's going to be reconstructed. We have a data center, it's a great data center, but it's currently taking up the gym at Saban. So that building's not really useful for kids. We can't use that as the temporary base that we have in the past. Shuttling part of the kids out to the old Long Lake, which by then will be really old. Really old.
The really old Long Lake.
You know, what, what would we do? Is it, are those reconstructs going to help offset that? Or would we be having to figure out other costs, maybe operational costs, to figure out a way to house those kids?
One of the big problems with the central grade scenario is we do not know what we would do with them from, at this vantage point. That is the biggest challenge, we would have to solve that, and the best I can tell you honestly is that we'd have to solve that over the next three or four years and figure that out. I can't tell you better than that. It is, it is one of the biggest holes for me in talking about central grade, is that we don't, at this moment, now, anything's possible. We, I'm, I'm very, I'm confident, because I've seen people and hard-working and people figure out things like this, and we will figure it out. I know there's a lot of different theories, I could start laying on the table, they, you know, I wouldn't, wouldn't want to do that though, without, for the sake of getting people nervous. We don't have a plan for the 600. The rest of the buildings, we can do that. We can do that through Long Lake, we can, we can transfer. In fact, we're really comfortable, especially with the Interlock, and because it's really pretty much a quick jaunt up the road to get them to Long Lake from Interlock in a relative sense. And then I think you'd say the same thing with, well, the other two, it's going to be a little bit farther. But remember, we did old Mission to Saban, you know, so we've done those types of challenges. The 600 would require some very creative thinking. And I, and I don't, I know almost certainly I would tell you that I don't think you could do it all to one building, I just, I just don't see how that could be possible. And I, and I don't, I know almost certainly, I would tell you that I don't think you could do it all to one building, I just, I just don't see how that could be possible. I think you'd have to be dispersing them, probably grade levels into different buildings.
You know, one of the criticisms that we had when we went forward with the bond in November was that. The plan wasn't clear to people, they said there's too many unknowns out there. It seems to me that with central grade, there's still a lot of unknowns. I mean, you, you've mentioned that, but also, you know, what's, how much are we going to need? And how are we going to handle, I, it just, I, I think that before we go forward and ask them to approve this. We need to have some of these details ironed out. As much as I too would like to see central grade. On the ballot for next, you know, in November, I, I just don't know that we're ready, and to come unprepared isn't fair. You know, we're asking them to take a leap of faith of that, in us.
I would say personally, if, if central grade isn't going to be part of the discussion, then I have a hard time justifying. Asking for an additional .07 mils to speed up reconstruction by a year, I mean.
Right.
Granted, all three of those buildings need to be reconstructed as soon as possible, but.
Well, I think it's striking that, is it worth, if central, hypothetically, if central grade is not part of the proposal. When you look at the annual cost for a $200,000 or $100,000 taxable value property. It's, the accelerating the third elementary by a year is almost as what it would cost to replace the Central High Auditorium. That just does not seem prudent to me.
It's a 35% increase on the three reconstruct line item.
Just another thought to throw in the room, as you're, as you're contemplating all of this, the .07 also assumes a mil, a, a property value increase. And so, so the, I, I think, and what I'm just going to say that is this. If our property increases assumptions are conservative, too conservative. Let's just say that we go into a phase of 2.6, 2.6, 2.6 instead of 1, 1, 1. That .07 probably could disappear, I mean, i- i- it is something that the board would still have the ability to look at, to say. We, property values went up more than we anticipated within the three, the two, the .2 mils, it's, it's another question. The question would be, how much do property values have to increase in order for it to stay within .2 mils? And that's, then I did another calculation, I, I don't know if it's two and a half percent or, or what. It, it might be that 35% increase that you're talking about, and 35% on our 1, 1, 2, 3, 3, that's not a lot. That's 1.35 and 1.35, I, I think that may be similar to what, what would take. So it's, it's a conservative approach, you know, looking at that.
And while the voters aren't approving millages, they're, they're approving dollars, they're approving the bonds, they're not approving the millage rate. That's just a commitment that we've made, and just trying to keep that in mind.
You know, as a comment to what Margie said about the unknowns on here, if we have to assume, for sake of argument. That it's going to take three to four years to figure out where we would take those kids. If Central Grade School is redone, and it's going to take three to four years to figure out what we're going to do with the building. They're adding an additional 500 square feet to, in essence, because that's about the size of the third floor, if it's. Then we have no business really putting this on. But I find it very curious also that the number for Central Grade School is the only number that hasn't changed in this process. That it's still based on a 2008 or 2006 analysis with a factor in there for inflation. So I mean, it's, all the information on Central Grade right now is squishy at best. And I do find it frustrating that it would take three to four years to figure this out before we bring it back. So.
I, I don't know that it necessarily would, I mean, if we said right now, we want this figured out in a year, come back in a year, all of these questions answered, I, I presume they could. But in a year, are we going to ask to go back for another bond, not necessarily at that point? So I don't know that it's going to take three to four years, but we don't have the numbers now, and this is now, now is when we need to make this decision.
I understand that, but we also went for the same decision last year, and apparently had all of these same questions hanging out there, and they're still unanswered at this point. And we were accused last year of putting together a proposal that was more of a blank check rather than specific budgetary amounts. So, I, I don't know, I, I'm frustrated with the responses to Central Grade School, but if that's reality, that's reality. I, I just think we have a population out there right now that seems to be supportive of us doing something positive and long-term with that facility. And we're saying, we'll wait three or four years and we'll let you have that opportunity to vote on it.
Well, so Scott, when you say, cause I, I would agree, it, it seems if, if this. The lower millage impact of this 2.6% increase this year has been put into the main proposal. And it isn't really reflective of the auditorium, right? It's not reflected there, and it's not reflected on central grade. I mean, even the being out six years makes a big difference as far as that compounded growth. I really hope we don't go into another loss for any reason, but a compounded growth, six years out, is much more difficult to predict than three years out, certainly. And I would assume that we're, you know, as, as Paul said, we're being very conservative. But if we're trying to be as transparent as possible to the voters. And rather than lowballing it to try to get something through, we put in a number that is conservative to be as honest and fair as we can. Is it, is that .18 really fair if we want to put that on and actually have it a hope of, of going through? Based on that 2.6 mils? Is, is that kind of the concern, that, that really, that maybe isn't a fair number? And it would adversely affect the ability for that to pass, is that what you're saying?
I'm.
I'm just saying that I have some questions about whether we could fine tune the central grade number, make some of the same concessions. That we heard criticism of last year, and have a number that might be 20 million as opposed to 25 or 18 million. I, I don't know, I don't think we have put the same time and effort into that number. That we have all the others that we're now bringing forward as option one.
I, I, I want to be, be very clear on one thing, and, and, and I want to be very clear on something that we know factually. We cannot do central grade in the next four years if we decide to do the three elementary schools, that's impossible, okay? So if, if the, uh, the request was, you know, change that plan to do central grade first. We could do the study on that, and, and all these numbers would reverse themselves, I mean, you could put that 25 million up into the 35 and reallocate, and you'd see that would be the, the issue. So it's not that, um, it, it, it is a function of where the plan has been directed. And the plan has been directed at those three elementaries, that's where it's been, that's why we have that information. Central grade, because of that, is years out, it's years out. We haven't studied the, 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 the minute detail of what you do, years out, because that, there's just too many questions to answer. If you said, do central grade next year, we would have that answer, we would do our months of study and we'd come back with that plan. So that's why it hasn't happened, it, it, it's not a matter of it not being able to happen, it's just that it doesn't seem like a valuable use of time to conjecture about what's out five, six years.
Well, and originally, if it was eight years out from now, if we had the study in 2006. And if we were to do another study either 2012 or 2013, and then on the original plan, and even this plan is still six years from that. I would assume that those numbers would change again, and we would do another study and closer, more detailed plan, closer to when we would actually begin construction there. That's what I'm assuming, right?
Of, of course.
Maybe that's why it makes sense not to have all the detailed information right now. Unfortunately, it's difficult to, my question is, I would, or my point is, I would love to get central grade on this. Again, selfishly, I'd love to see it in 2013. I'm trying to figure out how we can explain it to voters, not sell it to voters, but to explain it so everyone understands what it is. They feel that they have enough information to make a fair assessment and a fair choice on that. Without going into months of study and spending tons and tons of money trying to fine tune that, you know?
I, I don't think there's any question that we can come up with a plan for central grade, that's not going to take a year for us to determine. I think we can come up with a plan for where the kids would go, as of today. That may not be the same plan six years from now when we get there, when, when things change, but, although those aren't, those are hard decisions to make, but those are things we can figure out. I, I'm really confident that the team that we have could pull that off in a quick amount of time. Maybe not by June 10th, but certainly could have the answer for when we go out for the vote. So, I don't think that should be the sticking point. I think people would have to understand that in trying to develop plans for those two things six years from now. They're more than likely going to change somehow in that timeframe, but we can certainly.
As well, they probably should.
Yeah.
I mean, because we're going to have changing economic variables. I don't think ultimately this is a financial decision on Central Grade School, I guess is my point. I think this is more a matter of priorities, and I don't for a minute think that we should be changing the priorities from the three reconstructs to put Central Grade School ahead of it. I'm not recommending that. Those kids at Interlock and Glenlumis and Eastern need a new facility. And that's more important to me right now than what we do with Central Grade School. I'm just frustrated we can't figure out a way to capitalize on an opportunity with the voters who have shown support for that facility. And I don't know what's going to happen four to five years from now, whether we'll have an entirely new voting populace out there who wants us to tear it down. So that, I'm just trying to figure out some way to get a referendum on the building that we, where we can plan long-term for what we're going to do with that.
You know, I, I think one of the things that you should entertain is, as a board, I mean, I'm not pointing that question at anybody in particular. But I think as a board, you'd want to think about. If there was a fear that the support for central grade was going to wane in four or five years. To the dramatic effect that a 75% approval statistic would become a negative, you know, and so it wouldn't pass. Then I wonder about the long-term stability of that building as a viable option for us to have kids in. I think it's got a lot more staying power than that, it seems to be a, a facility that, um, the, the community really supports.
I'm not so worried about the community, I think I'm more concerned about Traverse City politics. I see what goes on across the street.
That's what I was going to say, is I think the more germane issue to the discussion is. Who's on the board, and who, who is the governance team that drives those decisions in terms of whether that's a priority in three or four years if we were to come back? I don't see the support in the community dying away, it just seems to be too strong for it. What about the folks that sit around the table who make the decision? I think that's probably what strikes me as, as a variable that could change.
That's exactly my concern, and I, Scott brought up, the exact point I'd been thinking about was, a few years ago, the city. Those of us who live in the city, wholeheartedly said, we believe it's worth the money to have our own police and fire departments. The mayor who came in decides he's just going to do whatever he can, because he doesn't think that that, that that's what ha, wants to happen, or that what we should be looking at. And it doesn't seem to matter what the voters want i- in that particular time. That agenda is continuing to go and go and go, and that's my concern, is I see this as a, I feel central grade is incredibly important. And I hate the idea of putting it at risk three or four years down the road.
I get your point, Megan, but in so, on some level, if people are willing to elect a school board that doesn't support central grade, then. Is the. I don't know, I mean, to me, that's, that's saying that they don't necessarily support it anymore, you know, and, and the, the views have changed. So to me, your elections are a little bit, when we, we don't have a mayor, we have a board, so we decide as a body of seven. So to me. You know, if there's a change on the board, it's because there's a change in the sentiment in the community. Or you would hope that people would be, on some level.
Yes and no, I mean, we've had election years where we've had seven candidates run for one or two spots, and we've had elections when it's been one for one spot. So I guess we have three people up next time, or four, four up next time. It could completely change. I, I think this is an important discussion, but I noticed the time, and I do think we have a couple students in the audience. I'm not suggesting we pause, but if the students want to leave and somebody can just sign for them.
Sorry, I, time escaped me.
Yeah, you're having so much fun.
Why don't we?
No, I mean, I do think that Steve's.
Are we opening this to public comment? We're probably, we're not voting on anything, are we?
So, but there is public comment?
I know there is, well, but afterward, our discussion's done, I just, I was curious, okay, go ahead.
Anyway, what I was going to say is I think Steve makes a very valid point, I don't think that 85% is going to reverse to less than 50 next time we go out.
Right.
In the general population, but I do think that the board could certainly change.
But, but my question is, in, I wouldn't put it on in three years, because it's a presidential year, and it would be a silly time to run. We found that out last year, it's kind of a silly time, it's hard to get a message out in the middle of a presidential election. So if it's run in four years. Would it even be run, that's, that's my biggest question is.
Right, would we wait?
The public might support it all they want.
Right.
But a board has to say, yep, this is what we're going to put on the proposal.
That's right.
And that's my number one concern, is I, I don't know who's going to be on the board.
Right.
They might agree with me, and that would be fantastic.
Want to be you?
But that's my concern, is our, I see it as this is our opportunity to guarantee.
That it's taken care of.
Yeah.
Is your, I'm just trying to get some clarification about advocacy, I'm not asking for vote, but is your, do you? Would you support putting central grade on as a third ballot issue? What's your thought?
Well, I think it would have to be, because I, I think we heard very, very clearly that the auditorium has to be separate. I would have a very difficult time at this point wrapping that into a main proposal. I don't have a huge issue personally putting central grade on the main proposal. I would be comfortable with it because it is a reconstruct, just like the other, others are. What about you, Scott?
I, I think it all depends on what the proposal is asking the voters to vote on. I mean, if we're asking them to designate money for a reconstruct of a building that won't start for six to eight years, I'm going to have a very difficult time with that. I would love to campaign for this, I think it goes to the heart of what Traverse City is all about. I think it goes to some real fundamental issues on how this city evolves, and, and what the master plan and everything else says about the city. I, I don't think it's an easy sell, but I think the alternative is, is onerous at this point. My problem is I don't know what we're going to propose. And I don't want to go to the voters with a, we don't have a plan on what we're going to do with the kids, we don't know what we're going to do with the building, and yet we want you to spend $25 million. Of your money over a period of time to reconstruct it, that's a hard thing for me to sell.
So you're thinking that, that even if we don't have it labeled out, but we say, well, we're going to be kind of doing it as a white box space, it'll still be housing kids. That's what the third floor would be, that's, you know, that that isn't a clear enough proposal.
Well, I think that's a good message, and I think what Steve said is probably true, that sometime in six years from now, we may have to change that to some degree. And, and we ought to change it based on variables that are out there that may change with it. But, you know, I, I, maybe we're just asking, telling the voters that we'd like to commit to Central Grade School long-term. And we don't know how much we're going to spend, and we don't know for sure what we're going to do, but we commit that we won't tear it down or abandon it.
But then we're going to be accused of not knowing what we're doing and not having a clear plan, I mean, I think, you know, I, I.
We went into it last year doing that.
But, but we didn't pass it.
I understand that, but I don't.
That's a lesson to be learned, not to repeat.
That's why I say it all comes back to what the ballot proposal says.
I don't know, we were soundly trounced on, on all of.
For multiple reasons.
For multiple reasons, but, and I agree, but to me, if we start adding another 25 million back up onto it, those first two proposals. We are creeping back towards that $100 million mark, I mean, yeah, we took off 25 million, but I don't know, I. I need to get the top priorities checked off the list. That's what I'm thinking. And those top priorities, to me, are those three buildings in dire need, and our central high school auditorium has got to be on par for curricular issues with West Auditorium. It's, that's, to me, as important as the other reconstructs as well. And not that Central Grade isn't important, but there's way too many questions, and it's way too far out for me. I, I'm not voting, but I'm telling you, if you asked me to, I wouldn't support putting Central Grade on.
Are you worried that Central Grade, whether it's in the main proposal or it's a third proposal, would sink the auditorium?
I'm not worried about the auditorium in general. I want, I want, this is, this is the minimum that we need. This is what we need going forward from here. I, I want to scale it back to the point where we can reconstruct our elementaries and get our, our east side high school up to par with our west side high school, so that, you know, the students, the 650 students a day who use that are using a good facility. To me, that is, that's the base. Anything we start adding on top of that, we risk being soundly trounced again. I am very worried that nothing will happen if we start compounding all these proposals, putting Central Grade on there, and then, I just think it's, I don't, I think it's a bad idea, bottom line. I can't support putting Central Grade on there, not because it takes away from the auditorium, but because it is not what the voters said they wanted us to do.
Oh, that's not what the survey said.
Right, I think the voters did say that.
But to me, what they, the bigger message was, $100 million is too much. So, I mean, are we going to just keep scaling it back a little at a time till we find the point where they can tolerate it? I don't know. I, I think if you add them all up, 75 million is still too much.
In my opinion, I don't think we know exactly where, what the tipping point was. There are a lot of factors here. When you add all of these proposals up, the number begins to creep towards that, that number we had last fall. When you add all the proposals up, the timeline begins to stretch out towards the number, or towards a year, the timeline that we had last fall. And when you talk about a, a plan for Central Grade, that inherently, if we don't change the priorities, we're talking about five or six years from now, anyone who is going to plan and put their name on a projection for the cost of a project, or a projection for what that would require in Mills, without knowing the property value, what the actual property values would be, having to make a projection that you can stand behind, are going to build in buffers, because everything involved in getting those numbers are based on assumptions. You have an, there's excess in there to account for the unknown that will happen. And so, there is a challenge, there is a problem with putting something out on the ballot that is, that is five, six years, six years out, when there's, there's a problem with actually knowing what we would do with the facility in that time period. I don't know, I know that the, the survey said that any one of these would, you know, were supported on their own merit. I don't know how the interplay of having all of them with a long timeline and a large total number, at what point that tipped people. And, and Central lends itself, by virtue of its timeline and its scope, to, to further discussion, and the benefit of three years or four years of actual data and actual numbers to put into a projection that is now only two or three years off.
I would still make the argument that, I mean, I go to, I go to seminars, and people talk about, there's a reason that retailers put 1999 on things. It's because people, for some reason, still look at it as $19 instead of $20. And it doesn't make any sense to me, but there's a reason they keep doing it. And as I see it, and these weren't the specific questions we asked, but the two things I would say above all the others that really sank us last year, was we never got off of that $26 million number that was thrown out the front beginning, we never got off of the performing arts label, the performing arts center label that we attached to it. So, $26 million in performing arts killed us there, and then a nice round number of $100 million, instead of $97 million, made it sound like that blank check. It sounded ridiculous. Of the two things, I mean, and that's, I remember asking the question, and I remember it being answered, that we figured it out, and it really was $100 million. That could be, that, I'm trusting that that was the case, but I still think it sank us. I, I think we never, ever were able to regain control of the conversation after that point. And we sat here a year ago, and two-thirds of the conversation in these meetings was about this silly auditorium. And that's where we spent the time, so that's where the media spent the time, and that's where the opponents spent their time, because we talked about it too much. And we used $26 million, which was a number that wasn't really close to, to what it ended up being. It was significantly over what it ended up being. So, I understand the creeping up there towards 100 million, and creeping up too much and sending out the timeline a little bit, but to me, six years, granted, it would have to have the accelerator on there, but six years, to me, doesn't seem overly long.
To tag onto that, one thought I had about saying that we're going to come back in three to four years for another big project, it sort of gets, turns our history of having a long-term capital plan that was supported by the bond, we sort of become more project-based in terms of hypothetically, other districts have said, "We need a new gym, vote for this. We need iPads, vote for this," rather than the long-term comprehensive capital plan. And I know that that was somewhat contradicted by what we heard in the surveys, and as well as by the voters, last November, but starting Central Grade in six years is not really that far away in the whole scheme of things.
But it's, that is quite a ways away in terms of what can change in the economics of the world. I mean, if we went from 1% to 2.6%, you know, that's, that's wonderful, but we've also had times where we've gone the other direction, and, you know, I'm not sure that people are quite ready to trust enough in their future earning potential to support a $25 million Central Grade project right now. They might be able to do that four or five years out, three or four years out, if, you know, we have some data that says things are really, really getting better. We can show you these, and, you know, those property values go up, everything else goes down. There's lots of good reasons to wait, in terms of, of the economics that people are going to be facing.
I think also, you know, was it you, Kelly? I don't remember what it was, you or Megan, who said, "We have this long-range, we have this long-range plan, let's present it and ask to support the full long-range plan." Well, I think that we can also say, "We do have a full-range plan, but we're going to be asking for it in increments. And this is the plan, and this is the expectation, and we're going to be coming back in three years, or four years, or whenever it is, for Central Grade. And this is built into the plan and the expectation, but right now, we're asking for the next four years, and this is what we want."
I think, I think that's a good point, and I don't want it to sound like I'm just going to dig my heels in on Central Grade, but, you know, we're going to have four weeks. We have a month. We have a really big gap that we're all going to stew, and there's going to be articles, and there's going to be nasty letters, and there's going to be all of that stuff. It would be really nice if people would come to the board meeting and actually talk about it before suing us or something, but, just throwing that out there. But I really think that, you know, it's, it's, I, I think you were making really good points. I, I want to make sure Glen Loomis is redone. I want to make sure Interlock and's redone. That's not escaping me. But, I, I just, I think that there was a lot of support for many different things. We have things in this main proposal that, quite frankly, were supported, like 30% support.
Yeah, I don't like, robotics would be one.
Well, but robotics, I see as something that we can go out and sell that, or not sell it, but we can explain it to people in a way that's going to make sense, and then show value. But the ball field bathroom-
The athletic fields, right.
Is a heck of a thing. And, and those kids, when they're freezing in May, because it's still snowing, and they really want to be playing baseball, I'm sure they and their families and the visitors would love to have better facilities out there, but that's a little bit tougher sell for the average person.
Sure.
It is. I mean, it's something to keep in mind, too, but we're not keeping that off. And I don't want, what I'm really afraid of is, I don't want to come back in a month and have us make decisions because we're based, because, out of fear that there will be an active opposition to whatever it is we try to do. And, or the newspaper may not agree with us. I mean, they were against the mailer, but they're all for spending almost the same amount of money on surveys and things like that. That was okay, is pretty much what they've said. And I don't like making decisions based on third parties and their ability to promote their ideas, or to heckle us, or anything else. So, I think we need to make the decision based on what we really, truly believe is best for our kids and our community, and not out of fear in any direction.
You know, Megan, one thing you bring up is that there are things in this main proposal. We're just sort of taking it as a lump sum main proposal, and I wonder if we do need to look at it a little bit more finely as a board and say, you know, no, and I know that right now, they're really small-ticket items that are sort of in there, but nonetheless, they are items that were not supported. We, we went out, we asked on the survey, "Do you support this, do you support that?" And they were not supported. So, I'm not quite sure why they're in there. And I wonder if we do need to go into a little bit of the detail and not just look at the big picture.
Well, and is, are there things, are there buildings like Blair? I mean, I'm still trying to wrap my head around how we deal with adding more universal preschool to, as many buildings as possible, and getting more kids, making sure more kids have access to preschool opportunities, when, without a full-scale redistricting, when we're planning on renovating schools and having Glen Loomis kids at Long Lake, or wherever they're going to be, do we go through and redistrict to fill spaces so that we have open spaces for preschool, and then ask those families who've just moved to move to a different building? Or do we put money into this proposal and set it aside to have those buildings, make sure that those buildings are added on to earlier, or that we have the money, if it's $1 million, it's $1 million? That was really inequivalent and not at all concise, but I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Remember, there is money in the proposal, in the main proposal, to add rooms on to buildings. About $3 million. It was at $7 million in the original proposal, we took $4 million out.
Because of the shortened timeframe.
Yeah. Yeah, you can always, always, again, when we come back, for, whenever we would come back, we can always put that back in at a later date, if we came back for Central in three or four years, or if there was something else, there's going to be something else eventually at some point. Those can be put back in. So, and then just a reminder, the two criteria, we talked about it last time, that, why things got bundled in that first section, it wasn't just based on strong support, it was an and/or. It were things that were considered critical. So, there are things in there like, that we never even asked people about, in regard to parking lots and roofs, and things like ball field, bathrooms at ball fields where they don't have them, play fields. So, there are things in there that either we didn't ask about, because they're just on the critical list, or, or they weren't big enough to ask about, or we did ask, and they didn't garner a majority support. But we still consider them to be critical.
But how does, I guess the big question, because I'm not forgetting that criteria that was laid out, what I'm asking is, how, I'm having a difficult time explaining to myself why bathrooms at a ball field are critical, when private money was raised to do it at Central for the baseball field, what, three years ago? That's how that was paid for. I'm having a hard time, that would be a tough one for me to explain to people, that it's a critical need for the use that it gets on a, on a length of time basis. If we were playing football games over there, that maybe is a different story. But I'm having a hard time for the spring athletics, that that's enough. I mean, I get that it's used for tennis, it's used for baseball, it would support all of that, but-
Soccer. Two seasons of soccer. I mean, it's, it's a facility that gets used a lot, and I think that the people who go there for the athletic events would describe it as a critical issue when there's no place to do your business. But we certainly can break those things out and share them, I mean, Paul's got all that, so that's, we've got it, we can break that out and show the specifics from that.
And didn't a number of those that don't show in this PowerPoint, had, they had a, a big, not certain, or I can't remember how we characterized it in our, our not scientific poll. There was an unsure.
Yeah, there was, those ones had pretty significant chunks of people who were neutral. And they, they, they were given that option, that they needed more information, so.
Well, I mean, just in looking at this, I'm just looking at the formal survey right now, it was 52%, 53% opposed these athletic capital improvements at West Senior High. You know, we can go back and look at these. I guess I personally would like to see again, or maybe have us revisit a little bit more, what's in the main proposal, so that I can sort of take that and look at it against what the results, survey results were.
Is, is this PowerPoint and the survey information on our website? Then can you provide that backup data to the board and supplement the website, so that during the next month, as we're trying to get more input from the public and conversations, we have someplace to direct them?
Yeah, and I think that the caveat we have to put on it, and we'll have to figure out a way to present it, is, when you see that list of things that are in there, remember, it doesn't equal $35 million, because you're combining two authorizations. And it will look like, and when you add those together, it's 65 and 35, it looks very close to 100. And, and what we want to be careful of is not to confuse the issue, so people think, "Well, it's just $100 million again." And so, when you combine those things on there, that's what you're going to have to filter out as a board, and we'll have to figure out a way to present it. I think we can, I think we'll have to list things that were, we'll have to divide it up between previous bond and new bond, somehow.
Well, one way or another, we're going to have to explain it, if we decide to go forward with the bond, we have to explain that anyway, sooner the better.
Yeah, I'm just telling you that when you go to look at it, as a preface to, preface to you looking at it verbally here, you're going to see a lot more than, you'll see more than $35 million worth of work, so. Because we'll have to get that out to you before the next board meeting. We'll, we'll send it out in an email.
Can I make a suggestion? I think we have some people out there in the public, well, we had some people out there in the public who might like to comment on this. Maybe we, I know we have to close our discussion and move on to public comment, but we had to at least hear from them before we put them all to sleep.
Was there anything else that we want to talk about before we put everyone to sleep?
I, just to kind of frame things, I am sensing solid support with need for questioning some of the components of the basic main proposal and CHS auditorium, and really, the, our discussion is really focused on Central Grade. Is that an accurate?
You mean the question of whether or not to put it back?
Yeah, I think that's still a variable for me. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going to die. It's not a hilt to die for, as an old commissioner friend of mine once said. But I certainly would like to continue the discussion, so, but whatever. I think we beat it to death for a while.
Besides the issue of the breakout, is there anything else that you want us to gather information on before June 10th that you would like sent to you? I haven't heard anything in the discussion.
I have some questions, but I can email them to Paul, and Paul can decide what he wants to- wants to do with the information. I have some questions about Lars Hockstead, and what can be done independent, and whether anything can be done with that facility without the rest of the school being engulfed in it. But I can email it.
Well, if you were to send specific questions, then they could send them in the packet about all, everything.
Sure.
If they're answerable questions.
It might be a good idea, is, when we, if you send them to Paul, when we get the answers together, we can disperse them to everybody.
Yeah, you can send them out that way, and then they don't have a phone tree.
I'm wondering how, I'm trying to remember, is, on that June, what, tenth board meeting? I'm just, I want to make sure that we have enough time there that we can talk about this while having all seven board members. And it's a month away, and I'm sure new points will come up, and questions will need to be answered before we're comfortable making that, that vote. And I'm trying to remember, are we going to be getting into the preliminary discussion of the budget at that meeting, or we're waiting until the last, okay. But I would say that maybe we want to, when we get to agenda setting, that wants to be a pretty light meeting, other than this, if possible.
What's on the topic schedule for June tenth, other than this?
Just policies.
I don't have the other board meeting in June on my calendar. Is it the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
And the thirteenth is a retreat. Yes, that I have.
Okay. Are you all comfortable ending the discussion, I should say pausing the discussion for now, and going on to public comment?
I am.
Okay. This time has been set aside for public comment to any issues relevant to TCAPS. It does not have to pertain only to agenda items. We'd invite anyone who'd like to make public comment to step forward at this time.
Ann Rogers?
Good evening. I'm Ann Rogers, and I'm a thirty-year teacher, the last twenty of which were spent at Norris School. These were very happy years. Norris School has a very rich history. And I don't know, most of you are too young probably to know much about it, but it is, was a combination of four one-room schools, one of which sat on the site where the current Norris School is. I went there in nineteen seventy, and I taught in fifth and sixth grade, depending on numbers. Sometimes it was a combination. And I thought it was a fabulous place to be. We not only had the rich history, we had a lot of pride. We won track meets, a city track meet. We had kids go to Washington from the spelling bees. We suffered through the pollution issue with our neighbor. We had a wonderful celebration of the bicentennial of our country in nineteen seventy-six. And in nineteen seventy-seven, we had a centennial celebration of Norris School. We had all sorts of demonstrations of butter making and dyeing of clothing. We invited speakers in, did field trips. Because this was a combination school of city kids and country kids. When my first years there, one of the kids, young lady, about third or fourth grade, rode her horse to school. We wrote a history of Norris School, and I don't know where your copies are now, probably lost in the basement someplace. We had a lot of oral histories that were done with some of the old timers in the neighborhood. It was a wonderful celebration. Mr. Ludka and a lot of his friends, who had children at the school, built the bell tower out in front. And that bell belongs to the, the school. It belonged to Norris School. It had always sat in the lobby, and we finally decided it should have a resting place. And while they were doing that, the kids in the school put together a time capsule. It was a piece of some poly tubing, pretty good size, and we filled it with all sorts of items. They were all on display for a while, and then buried in that bell tower. I know you've been negotiating to sell Norris School, and I know it had some deed restriction problems that you have to go back through the years and get permission from the former owners who had designated it as a school, and not to be used for anything else. But the bell and the, the bell tower should not go with the school. That's part of the community there. And I know I have talked to some of the parents, some of the former parents, a few of the students. Eric, I don't know if you were there at the time, but this should not be part of the sale. Some of the parents thought perhaps going to the park, putting it in the park, or putting it across the street at the town center. But I think that, and I would encourage you to move it in some way, because it belongs to the community, not to the building. I have one more thing I would like to ask, and I, I hadn't thought about it ahead of time, or I probably would have written it in, but I'd love to know where all the photographs are of all the things that we did back in those days. I'm sure they're buried in the basement someplace, but maybe if somebody's got time sometime, it would be a wonderful display. And also the little history booklet that was written at the time.
Kina just had the history center has it.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make public comment?
I'd like to thank the board for their hours of timeless, selfless, dedicated work to our district. My name is Todd Vipon. I've been with the district since nineteen ninety-six, and I currently teach general music to about six hundred students at Holy Angels, Macular Conception, the International School of Bertha Voss, and Traverse Heights Elementarys. And tonight, I stand here in support of the TCA bargaining team. I'm very proud to be a part of TCAPS. I like to say that we are the region's premier school system. I also like to remind folks that when it comes to music education, we are the competition. But part of me is discouraged. Some of it has to do with Lansing, has to do with the punitive legislation that has nothing to do with improving education. When I hear about a principal telling a staff that no one in their building will be rated highly effective, that discourages me. When I see general music colleagues who don't have a classroom in which to teach, that discourages me. When I teach ten-section days with no effective prep time, which precludes me from being able to meet with kids during the day, that discourages me. And now hearing that negotiations are apparently hung up on how a proposal is worded, that discourages me. Why? We have bigger issues to deal with, not the least of which is school funding and the bond issue. So in the end, the question is, what do you value? What are your priorities? Remodeled buildings and expanded programs are great, but without the human capital, highly effective, experienced master teachers, what have you got? I enjoyed reading the superintendent's emails during Teacher Appreciation Week. But now actions need to back up those very kind words. Just from the comments we've heard from our Coast Guard friends tonight, it's clear TCAPS adds value to this community. And none of it could happen without the highly effective educators of the Traverse City Education Association. We are pleased to partner with the board to make TCAPS the region's premier school system. So please, let's get it done, and let's move on. Again, I support the TCA bargaining team. And again, I thank the board for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to quality, locally-controlled, not-for-profit public education. And by the way, I applaud your vote on the TB A, TB A ISD budget. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Cornwell?
Hi. I'm Ellen K. Cornwell, and I started teaching at Central Grade School in nineteen seventy-five. And I love that school. And so I'm kind of here to talk about Central. And back in the eighties, I was involved, very involved, when they were thinking about tearing the school down. And was it Susie Antash that used to be on the, and her and Patty Olson and I worked very hard to save Central Grade School. My, when we started redoing Central, it was, was it in nineteen, in two thousand and six, when we started redoing? I'm putting you on the spot. I can't remember either when, but my classroom was one of the first classrooms that was done. They started, and at that time, the plan was that they would do two classrooms every summer. And so then, we wouldn't have to displace all of our kids. Well, my classroom was done, and another, at that time, second-grade classroom was done. And then it kind of stopped. And then two years ago, we had four kindergarten rooms redone. I've been there in this, I mean, I've been there so long that I was there when all the windows were replaced. And, and that was a summer project also. So I, and we haven't had summer school at our school that many years. So, I kind of disagree. I think we could really look at Central and look at the summer plan. I know the Film Festival is there now, but the, that work, when they redid the auditorium, it was done in time for the Film Festival. So, and I don't know all that has to be done, but I'm just saying that I think we could really look at that plan again. We have four kindergarten rooms done. Now we have two first grade. If we went back to that plan of two classrooms a year like it was slated, we wouldn't have to displace everyone, and we could really look at, you know, getting one big project done in the summer. So, thank you for hearing me. I didn't plan on speaking, or I would have dressed a little nicer. Thank you very much. And if you do have a committee, I wouldn't mind being on it.
Would anybody else like to comment? Thank you all for sticking it out. We appreciate it. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd move to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.